This is the Wednesday, May 24th, 2023 morning session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, good morning. Please call the roll.
Good morning. Ryan?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Maps?
Here.
Rubio?
Here.
Ryan? Uh, Wheeler? Sorry.
Forgot my name already. After six and a half years. Here. We'll now hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good morning.
Good at it. Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you're representing an organization, please identify it. And finally, for testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, a couple of quick announcements. We have a lot of important people in the audience today. Are the aardvarks in the house? All right, we have the OES aardvarks in the house. Welcome. Thank you for being here. And we have the Rose Festival Court here today, and we'll get to them a little later. And so, welcome and thank you all for being here. First up is Communications. First item is number 396, please.
396, request of Perla Estrada to address council regarding community-based organizations' wage advocacy.
Good morning.
Is Perla here? I don't think they have arrived.
All right, we'll move on to the next individual, please. 397.
Request of Jessica Mathis to address council regarding community-based organization wage advocacy. They canceled their request.
All right, we're moving through these very quickly. 398, let's see if we get luckier.
Request of Pia Johnson to address council regarding United Nations Sustainable Development Goals in our region.
Welcome.
Thank you, city council members, for this privilege of speaking to you today. We are the fourth graders from Oregon Episcopal School. We are here to talk about advocacy and to advocate for something we think is very important to our city and our world. Advocacy is standing up for something we think is right or you think can make a difference. As fourth graders, we have heard from and visited advocates in our city, such as Black Futures Farm, who have advocated for food sovereignty. We have learned that advocates use tools like writing petitions and letters to show people what is right or what needs to be changed. Advocates can also use art or protesting. One more important part of advocacy is using empathy to understand many perspectives. All advocates raise their voice like we are doing today.
There are many changes we could advocate for, but today we are here to talk specifically about plastic pollution and plastic recycling. Earlier this year, we went to Camp Westwood on the Oregon coast, and we spent time on the beach. All around us, there were pieces of plastic on the ground. We couldn't even take off our shoes because there were so many pieces of plastic. It ruined the experience of the beautiful beach scene. While we were there, we picked plastic up off the beach as an act of service. This mosaic was created from the beach plastic we found that day. But we didn't just want to take care of the plastic that ended up on the beach. We wanted to think about how to stop plastic from getting to the beach in the first place. We began researching the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. The SDGs are goals that the United Nations has put together for a sustainable future for everyone by 2030. We first heard about the SDGs from Western Farm Workers Association, another group of strong advocates in our city. There are 17 SDGs in all. Each fourth grader researched an SDG and an issue affecting our region. We put on an advocacy symposium for our school to educate them about the goals and issues. Because of our experience at Camp Westwood, the whole fourth grade learned about the reasonable consumption production SDG, which includes plastic production and plastic recycling. Now, today, we want to advocate for how our city can help us all reach this goal. We want you to know that we are trying our hardest to make this problem better, and we really need your help to change how the city of Portland manages plastic.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Maps?
Sure. I just want to take a moment to thank Pia and Abigail and Desmond for their testimony today. You did a great job of highlighting why advocacy is important. You also did a really important job of highlighting a specific issue that this council should pay attention to. And also, I want to reassure you, later on this afternoon, or maybe even this morning, this council will take up an ordinance which helps clarify and improve the systems that we use for plastic recycling. So I want the kids who testified today to know that we heard you. We agree with you, and we're moving forward on the priorities that you care about. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have more, correct? Very good.
All right, item 399, request of Desmond Overbeck-Gear to address council regarding United Nations Sustainable Development Goals in our region.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. You have heard from our peers about why we began to investigate plastic. Next, we want to share some of the research that shows why this is an important issue to the city of Portland. Starts with how plastic is made. The process of making plastic takes a lot of effort, money, and time. Ninety-nine percent of plastic is made from fossil fuels, which need to be extracted from the earth. After they are extracted, fossil fuels go through an intensive process until finally small particles called nurdles are formed. These are smaller than a pea and are shipped around the world to make plastic products. Right from the start, the environment is impacted. During and transporting of oil and gas can cause oil spills. Bracking can cause earthquakes. Toxins are released into our atmosphere, and liquid waste can flow into rivers, lakes, and oceans.
Once plastics are produced, much of it ends up as waste. Just since we've been speaking to you, 1 million plastic bottles and 9 million plastic bags have been thrown away. Can you believe it? And where does it all go? Seventy-nine percent goes to landfills. Some plastic, like the plastic in a water bottle, can take 400 to 1,000 years to decompose. Twelve percent of plastic waste is burned, which has very harmful side effects. Nine percent is recycled. Why so little plastic recycled? Some recycling plants do not accept all types of plastic. Also, if plastic is not washed out, it is not accepted. Did you know that 1,000 different animal species are harmed by our plastic pollution? Plastic can be found in 9% of seabird's stomachs because fish eggs and nurdles look almost identical, so seabirds often eat nurdles. Plastic in the ocean even gets into the very beginning of the food chain. Filter feeders are animals that eat by straining little particles out of the water, and this can include microplastics. The plastic moves up the food web from these filter feeders. If no improvements are made in our plastic production and recycling efforts, by 2050, there will be more plastic in our oceans than fish. The plastic problem is a global issue. More than one quarter of the world's population does not have waste removal services. We certainly have these services in the United States, but Americans also produce the most weight per person, over five pounds a day. One country can't fix this large problem of too much plastic waste, but we can do our part. We have a chance to make a change right here in Portland to keep this problem from growing even bigger.
Thank you. Commissioner Rubio, did you have a question? Yeah, I think there's one more. Okay, we'll hold up. Thank you. Appreciate you. Item 400.
Request of Abigail Andrews to address council regarding United Nations Sustainable Development Goals in our region.
Now that we know these facts about plastic and recycling, it's time for us to make a change. Let's start with things that we agree with in our city. We've learned that Portland has a 2030 Waste Management Plan. We agree that it's important that waste management will be an affordable service so that all Portlanders will be able to have equitable access and all Portlanders can participate in this program. Providing equitable access includes hearing from tribal voices, which may share a different perspective on waste management. We also agree with the living wages and benefits of this plan because it will provide decent work and economic growth, which is another Sustainable Development Goal we studied. The stronger waste management infrastructure gives jobs to people that don't have jobs and gives them the living wages they need. Modernizing the infrastructure is important because it will recycle things better and reduce the need to manufacture new plastic products.
Now, we'd like to tell you the things we disagree with or hope will change. We don't feel that the 2030 Waste Management Program has clearly addressed the strong need for plastic recycling. As it is, only a limited amount of frequently used plastics can be recycled, and we believe more types of plastic need to be included in recycling programs. We also think that how the recycling program works should be easier for citizens to understand. The citizens are the ones affected by the plan, and if recycling is easier to understand, then all citizens will contribute to solving this problem by recycling more. We also noticed that there is no clear waste management plan for people experiencing homelessness. One idea would be to incentivize all people, including those experiencing homelessness, to recycle more things. For example, a 15-cent deposit on cans and bottles may encourage people to participate more.
As fourth graders, this is so important to us because this is our future and the future of our city and our world. The changes that we are suggesting are important to our city, to its people, and the environment. This issue impacts the way we live, breathe, and eat. We see plastic in our food and our water. Animals, too, shouldn't have to suffer from our actions. You need to take our voices into account. We believe the improvements in the waste management program and to our city's recycling programs should be started as soon as possible, since it will start helping our city and environment right away. This action will help us work towards the Sustainable Development Goals. You can help save our future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you. I just want to share with all of you that testified, thank you so much for coming here to share your concerns. I just want to say how impressed I am with each one of you and how proud we are of your advocacy. And we got your letter. I know that you sent a letter and a petition to our office, and it was signed by dozens of your classmates, and you were expressing really clear ideas and concerns about climate change and the impact on communities and the environment. And I just want to say your testimony is very clear and strong. You raised very good points about our waste management team, and I'll carry those back to our team so that they hear and understand where your concerns come from. And I just want to share that, you know, I oversee the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, which is sort of the city's central office that works on ways to reduce carbon and deal with resiliency, climate resiliency, but also oversees the waste recycling. So just keep using your voices. Your voices are important because you have a very unique perspective as young leaders who are going to be leading us in the future. And so, what you're saying and doing now really takes shape and takes root. So we're very proud of your advocacy. You've been strong leaders and shown a lot of advocacy today, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Our Commissioner Gonzalez.
I just want to thank you all so much for testifying today, participating in democracy, speaking up for what you believe in. It's essential for our city. It's essential for our country. So thank you for being good citizens, and you got bright futures ahead of you. Keep engaged and keep pushing for what you believe in. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan.
Well, good morning, aardvarks. It's so wonderful to start the meeting with the schoolchildren telling us what we should focus on. And so, thanks for telling the stories about going to the beach and about the plastic. I'm really glad I didn't have a plastic bottle with me today. I'd feel so shamed. So it's really important that we just constantly hear that message. And there's so many good articles on what you're talking about, but there's nothing better than getting live testimony from people that will be influenced and affected by this the most. So thanks for setting the tone for a wonderful day here at City Hall. Appreciate you, and all of you up there as well.
I want to add my thanks. Thanks to all of you who testified, and thanks to all of you who are here from OES, all you aardvarks. This really speaks well to you as students, and it speaks well to your teachers. These were very thoughtful presentations. They were well-practiced. I could tell. You maintained eye contact while you were making your remarks. And I know that it is very intimidating sometimes to sit at that table in a room full of people and speak to the city council, and I think you did an exceptional job. Your message is a very important one, and I'm glad that you're focused on it. I want you to know that here at the city of Portland, as Commissioner Rubio indicated, as the commissioner in charge of planning and sustainability, this is something we take very seriously. I also want to just add an extra here. Earlier today, the Rose Festival Court, which is behind you, I was asked a question, "How do you resolve conflict?" And I gave my best answer. You topped my best answer. And so, I want to revise my answer and say I appreciate the spirit in which disagreement was brought to this chamber today. You started by saying, "Here's where we agree." That's a valuable lesson, is to talk about where do we agree? And you did your research, and you looked at our climate action goals and our environmental plans and our recycling plans, and you said, "We agree with this, we agree with this, and we agree with this." That's a powerful introduction to get our attention and understand. You're coming to us with advocacy, but with the spirit of trying to reach a good resolution for all of us. And then you identified the areas where you thought the plans were weak or needed revision or could be improved. And I just want to say to the Rose Festival Court behind you, I hope you heard that, too. I actually thought that was a really, a really good and solid approach. And so, I'm going to add that to my answer from earlier this morning. So thank you for the question. Kids, thank you for being here today. And to all of you from OES, we appreciate you, and we thank you for being in our chamber today. Thanks a lot. Thank you. To the consent agenda, have any items been pulled?
Two items have been pulled, 404 and 406.
404 and 406 pulled. Please call the roll on the remainder of the consent.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Bear with me one second here. And 404 and 6. 404 and 406 have been pulled. Okay. Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The consent agenda is adopted. First time certain item, please. Item number 401.
Proclaim May 26 through June 11, 2023 to be the 116th Annual Portland Rose Festival Focus on Fun Celebration.
Colleagues, our next item is a proclamation honoring the 116th Annual Portland Rose Festival. I'd like to now pass this to Commissioner Maps to introduce this morning's presenters. Commissioner Maps.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think at this point, I am supposed to invite up Marilyn. I think I'm missing part of my revenue show, so I'm not sure what we're supposed to do here.
It looks like Marilyn Clint, CEO, and Contessa Diaz-Nicolaitis, President. Welcome.
Good morning.
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 Good morning.
Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Maps, members of the city council, thank you so much for having us here. I am Marilyn Clint. I'm the new CEO of the Rose Festival, the first woman to hold that title. I accepted that position after Jeff Curtis decided to move on this past year. Prior to that, I have spent decades doing events and communications at the Rose Festival. Believe it or not, I coordinated my first Rose Festival parade in 1976 as the Bicentennial Starlight Parade, the return of our nighttime parade, all those decades ago. 111 Rose Festival parades have been coordinated under my events leadership. Back in 2015, Mayor Charlie Hales declared a Parade Queen Day in my honor to honor my work. And while I've given up that parade management role now at Rose Festival, I am currently part of a team of a dozen individuals across North America who are putting together parade safety standards for the American National Standards Institute, a project we hope to have completed in the next couple of years. I am not only committed to Rose Festival and its successful comeback, but I'm committed to the city of Portland and its successful comeback. Unlike my two predecessors, I am a Portland resident, a homeowner, a taxpayer, and a voter. Portland's vision is my vision, both as the Rose Festival CEO and as a citizen of the Rose City. It is an honor and a great responsibility for me to continue my work with Rose Festival as its staff leader. Before I introduce you to the leader of our volunteer board of directors, I want to thank you for your partnership. The Portland Rose Festival Foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The Rose Festival is our gift to the city of Portland and to the Portland region. We could not do this without your support and commitment and without the hard work of the city bureaus and individual personnel who work with us. I want to personally thank two people today. Allison Madsen of the Portland Bureau of Transportation, whose collaboration has helped us continue our hard-earned comeback. And over my long career, I have been privileged to work with many amazing police traffic sergeants. And on those parades that I mentioned earlier, one of those is Sergeant Steve Andrusko, and I want to publicly thank him as he prepares for his final Rose Festival parade this season before he retires from the police bureau at the end of the year. Now, it's an honor for me to introduce one of the most passionate and committed people I know, the president of our board of directors, Contessa Diaz-Nicolaitis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be here representing the board, staff, and thousands of volunteers of the Rose Festival Foundation. We have a very busy team making big things in our community, and we're so proud to play a major role in Portland's continuing comeback story as the city's official festival. This year is very exciting. We're going to focus on fun. After everything we've endured these past few years, we need to make time to actively pursue the things that bring us joy. We do what We do what we do because we know the importance of positivity and joy in our community. And the Rose Festival is filled with opportunities to create lasting memories, engaging experiences, and most of all, what I'm most passionate about, which is fun. Some of the fun is already underway, and here today with me are 15 Rose members of our Rose Festival Court, each representing their high schools and their neighborhoods. These amazing young women are all receiving valuable training and scholarships, one-on-one mentorship from professionals from Unitas Community Credit Union. They are on a journey of outreach to bring the spirit of the Rose Festival to our community. Rose Festival officially opens this Friday at 5:00 p.m., when Commissioner Ryan will help us cut the ribbon to open City Fair at Waterfront Park. And that night, thousands of people will enjoy our opening night fireworks, carnival rides, and corn dogs are what memories are made of. And so generations of families and friends have enjoyed exactly that over the years and will continue to do so. There's so much to see and do during this year's Rose Festival City Fair, three weekends at the waterfront. Last year, Rose Festival was able to collaborate with local events who were not able to return by offering representation in Rose Festival events like the Grand Floral Parade. This year, we have been thrilled to see events like Cinco de Mayo, the 82nd Avenue of Roses Parade, and St. John's Return to the Streets of Portland back on schedule. And in keeping with the spirit of collaboration this spring, we announced a new partnership with another Portland tradition. We're so excited. The Oregon Brewers Festival, we're thrilled to collaborate this year for a tap takeover during City Fair's second weekend, June 2 through 4. And we're thrilled at Rose Festival that we were able to continue to have this event in downtown Portland and welcome the Oregon Brewers Festival with us this year. Our three parades are ready to get rolling, with the Starlight Parade electrifying downtown streets, starting on NATO Parkway. Kiddos will be ready to toot their horns and bring their drums and show the world how fun is done at the Junior Parade in the Hollywood District. And I'm probably not supposed to have a favorite, but I definitely do, and that's the Grand Floral Parade, which will continue on the All East Side Route, starting at the Veterans' Memorial Coliseum, and will see its way down Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and end at Lloyd Center this year. This year, there are so many fun features for the Grand Floral Parade, and I can't possibly name them all. The parade will celebrate Oregon culture as well as our shared history. I'm especially excited to see the float entry that allows us to honor women who have welded or riveted their place through history. The Rosie the Riveters during World War II are here for the American Rosie the Riveter Association Annual Convention. We will welcome them. The diversity of Portland and its communities are sprinkled throughout the parade. For example, we'll awaken a 100-foot dragon prior to the Rose Festival Grand Floral Parade. The Royal Reunion will return with past princesses and queens, decades of them, in addition to the 2023 Rose Festival Queen, who will be crowned the day before on June 9 undercover at Oregon Square. We're hard at work recruiting volunteers, we've been talking a lot about that, for all of our parades, monitor barricades, and to help clean up trash and keep the cleanest and greenest festival in America, to help us decorate the floats in our new building ourselves. As Marilyn mentioned, we are so incredibly grateful for our partnership with the city of Portland. We truly could not do this without all of you, and we want to thank Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Maps, the entire council for your continued support. We hope you take the time to enjoy this year's Rose Festival, and we hope you can focus on fun. And now it is my sincere and great pleasure to present to you the 2023 Rose Festival Court, presented by Unitas Community Credit Union. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. We are the 2023 Rose Festival Court, presented by Unitas Community Credit Union. We'd like to introduce ourselves and tell you what's happening during this year's Rose Festival. Audi!
Hi, my name's Audi Etheridge, and I'm currently a senior at Ida B. Wells High School, where I serve as ASB Director of Communications and President of our Communicator Programs. I'm also an avid book reader and love working with children through volunteering. The Portland Rose Festival would not be possible without the support of our several volunteers. If you're interested in becoming a volunteer, please visit the Rose Festival website.
Mary Mare!
Hello, my name is Mary Mare Consel, and I'm from Roosevelt High School. One thing I'm most proud of is being part of my school's specific Islander Club. The Rose Festival is about showing how we can pass down traditions, honor diversity, and celebrate unity. This year's theme is Focus on Fun, and we cannot wait to see you at this year's Rose Festival.
Abby!
Hi, I'm Abby from Franklin High School, and next year I plan to major in engineering at Oregon State University. My favorite place in Portland is Mount Tabor Park because it's where I run with my cross-country team, and it provides a beautiful view of the city. Speaking of beautiful views, make sure to come to the Portland Waterfront Park on May 26, this Friday, to see the biggest and baddest opening night fireworks.
Mariah!
Hi, I'm Mariah, and I'm a senior at Grant High School. I love to play volleyball as well as be on my school's varsity team, and I was also on the second team all week for volleyball. During the festival, you can meet Mr. Professor Fun, and he will be at City Fair and in all of our parades. He taught me a fun fact, that having fun is an important part of our well-being, and scientists have found that when people have fun, they tend to lose track of time, which proves that while having fun, time flies when you're having fun.
Sierra!
Hi, I'm Sierra. I'm a senior at Central Catholic High School. I am an All-American Cheerleader in the 2022 Youth of the Year for the metropolitan area for Boys and Girls School. Please join us down at the waterfront, June 10 and 11, for Dragon Boat Racing, a state building with a vibrant display of colored culture.
Piper!
Hi, I'm Piper. I'm a senior at St. Mary's Academy. I've been on my school's all-female robotics team, the Beta Blues, and in my free time, I enjoy watching tutorial videos on coding and technological innovations. If you also enjoy illuminating technological achievements, then come join us downtown on June 3 for the Carrot Oregon Starlight Parade with your friends and family, starting at 8:00 p.m.
Nikki!
Hello, my name is Nikki. I'm a senior at David Douglas High School. My favorite place to visit in Portland is the Peninsula of Rose Garden. I love seeing the many different colored roses in the summertime. Another beautiful Roseville place in Portland is the International Rose Test Garden. While you're there, be sure to stop by the Rose Test Store.
Lulu!
Hi, I'm Lulu, a junior at Benton Polytechnic High School. I spend a lot of my time dedicated to basketball, but when I can, I love visiting downtown Portland. I love to experience the city vibe, the local businesses, and the culture. Along the waterfront in downtown Portland, you'll find the Rose Festival City Fair. Enjoy your favorite fair foods, carnival rides, and shows every weekend from May 26 to June 11.
Jovan!
Good morning, my name is Jovan, and I'm a senior at Parkrose High School. Filmmaking is a big passion of mine, and it's something that I enjoy working on both inside and outside of school. On June 11, the Hollywood Theater will be filled with youth from around the world celebrating the International Youth Silent Film Awards. So please come stop by and enjoy these youth-inspired works.
Alicia!
Hi, I'm Alicia. I'm a senior from Lincoln High School. I'm the president of my school's business club, speech and debate team, Indian Student Union, and captain of our girls' varsity golf team. When I grow up, I'd like to run a business. The Portland Rose Festival's Grand Floral Parade is one of the world's most diverse parades. Watch out for our sister city, Gaoshung, and their award-winning Shute High School Marching Band.
Crystal!
Hi, I'm Crystal. I'm a junior at Jefferson High School. My favorite part of Rose Festival is the community service in the parades, because I like to see the smile on people's faces and the impact I have on others. On June 7, the Hollywood District will be filled with smiles and laughter at the Fred Myers Junior Parade. Come out and enjoy the oldest and largest all-children's parade in the nation.
Lily!
Hi, I'm Lily. I'm a senior at McDaniel. I'm a reporter and manager for my school newspaper, The Oracle. This year, the Portland Rose Festival is partnering with Pamplin Media Group to print out coupons in the Portland Tribune and other local news sources for free entry on Fridays for the City Fair. Make sure to be on the lookout for those.
Emily!
Hi, I'm Emily, and I'm a senior at Cleveland High School. I am the president of my school's Red Cross Club, and my career goal is to become a nurse. The Rose Festival is excited to welcome some of our own frontline defenders from the U.S. Navy, U.S. Coast Guard, and Royal Canadian Navy for one of the premier Fleet Week events in the country.
Elizabeth!
Hi, everyone, my name is Elizabeth, and I'm a junior at Clackamas High School representing Metro East. I love singing, acting, as well as watching films in place. The Portland Rose Festival is excited to partner with Dragon Theater to provide a variety of performances and activities for kids in this year's Kid Zone within City Fair.
Deja!
Hello, my name is Deja. I'm a senior at Tigard High School, representing Metro West. What I'm most proud of from my high school career is being a member of the Intercombio Program, which is a leadership program that helps mentor eighth-grade students to prepare for their high school success. On behalf of the 2023 Rose Festival Court, we would be honored to have you join us at Oregon Square Park at 11:00 a.m. on June 9 for the Queen's Coronation, presented by Unitas Community Credit Union.
Thank you for hosting the 2023 Rose Festival Court, presented by Unitas Community Credit Union. We hope to see you at this year's Rose Festival.
Thank you. All right, we'll hear from some of our colleagues. Commissioner Maps, why don't you go ahead and start us off, please?
Sure. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here we are again, and what a pleasure it is to have everyone in council. Now, I am delighted to join my colleagues on this council in proclaiming May 26 through June 11, 2023, to be the 116th Annual Rose Festival Celebration. The theme for this year's Rose Festival is Focus on Fun. As always, it is great to have the Rose Festival Court with us in chambers today. Since the 1930s, Portland's Rose Festival has included appointing a Rose Festival Court. And one of the things that I try to do every Rose Festival is to read the speeches delivered by members of the Rose Festival Court. The theme for this year's Rose Festival Court speeches is, How Are You Focusing on Fun in 2023? So now, colleagues, what I'd like to do is just take a moment to share with you some of the ways our Rose Festival princesses answered that question. For example, Princess Etheridge from Ida B. Wells wrote, "The best way to prioritize fun in 2023 is to prioritize myself and to listen to what I need." And Princess Kansu from Roosevelt wrote, "This year, I plan on focusing on fun. By living in the moment, I also plan on focusing on things that bring me joy, like school activities." And Princess Crowe from Franklin wrote, "You have to make your own fun. Fun isn't a feeling you chase, it is a feeling you create." And Princess Ta from Parkrose wrote, "Focusing on fun to me means being present and enjoying those these next few months with my community before walking across that stage and receiving a diploma." And our Princess from Lincoln High School wrote, "For me, my idea of fun is trying new things." Our Princess Welch from Cleveland wrote, "To me, fun is defined in two ways, your attitude and the people that you're having fun with." Now, colleagues and everyone who can hear my voice, those thoughts also capture what this year's Rose Festival is all about. The Rose Festival is an opportunity to have fun with friends, family, and community. This year's Rose Festival is an opportunity for our community to come together. This year's Rose Festival is also an expression of our city's resilience. And this year's Rose Festival is a reminder that Portland's downtown is open, clean, and safe, which is why I'd like to close today by thanking the Rose Court for teaching us about the meaning of the Rose Festival. And colleagues, for that reason and more, I am proud to join you in proclaiming May 26 through June 11, 2023, to be the 116th Annual Rose Festival Celebration. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'll hand it up.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Commissioner Gonzalez. Well, I want to thank everyone for joining us today, the volunteers at the Rose Festival. I do want to call out, as the Commissioner of Public Safety, to protect our participants. It is imperative that we have sufficient volunteers for the parades coming up. So please reach out to the Rose Festival team if you're interested in volunteering. It's absolutely essential that we have numbers on the streets to allow everyone to participate safely. As a reminder, the Portland Bureau of Emergency Management will have our net teams out, that's our neighborhood emergency teams, will be volunteering throughout the festival, but we need more numbers collectively. I do want to also highlight the work of the Bureau of Emergency Management with working with the Rose Festival to make sure each parade is fully staffed. In particular, Katie Wolf, Operations Manager, and Jeremy Van Curran, I hope I pronounced that right, Community Resilience Manager. And if my office can be of any assistance in connecting with volunteer opportunities, please reach out to Commissioner Renee Gonzalez's office. Grace Starpack is our contact there. Thank you again for all you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Maps, for bringing this really bright acknowledgement forward today. I want to thank Marilyn and Contessa and the Rose Festival Association, as well as the Board of Directors, and to the esteemed court royalty who've joined us today. I just want to say congratulations to each of you. You make our city proud, absolutely proud. And we're so excited that we have the Rose Festival back in force, full force this summer. Very, very excited for it. All of us have lifelong memories about going to the festival. And in addition to being a Portland tradition, it feels like a family tradition to all of us as well. And this year is so important because it's an important sign of Portland's vitality and recovery, too. So very eager to feel that connection again. Also, I want to also thank all the dedicated Rose Festival volunteers. There are hundreds of them who do everything from creating floats to organizing parade routes, as you mentioned, Marilyn. It takes so many, like hundreds of hours of planning and execution to create these amazing memories for Portlanders. So we're very fortunate to have that in our community. And then last, I want to join my colleagues in giving a big appreciation to city staff who've also worked really hard to ensure a great event, and especially our police officers, emergency management staff who work together on public safety events, transportation staff, our event staff at Prosper Portland, and also the park staff who tend to the waterfront park grounds and other parks during the festival. So just happy festival, everyone, and my family and I will see you down there.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Good morning, and so good to see everyone. Marilyn, you are the Parade Queen, although my spouse would say I'm also a Parade Queen. And Contessa, you're such a great volunteer. Your energy is amazing, and I'm so happy that you're the president. It's great to have this girl power at the top this year. I also want to just acknowledge that my very first rose bloomed just yesterday, so I brought it in today. Yeah, I've been growing these things for a while, and because of the cold, remember how cold it was for a while? I was worried. Were you worried? Yeah. So opening night, I'm looking forward to playing with all of you, the rose princesses. We get to, it'll be better than last year just because the weather gods, wasn't it like, it was like thunder, lightning, everything, and really, really wet. I'll never forget it. So it was really hard to enjoy the rides. So I'm looking forward to coming down on Friday to helping kick off. And also, I'm hoping the weather gods stay good to you, because I think all three weekends last year were damp, and that's really bad for the gate receipts at the Fun Center. So let's hope that we're lucky all three weekends. And I know I'm looking forward to the rose parade, the junior rose parade, the coronation. And I really, last year when I was in the role of Commissioner Maps, I became a big fan of those Dragon Boat races, so that'll be fun to be down there for that. Anyway, I'm a little kid excited about the Rose Festival. I used to get up really early with my grandma, like really early, as early as back in the day, you went strawberry picking, you had to get up at like 5:00, and then also for the rose parade. And so...
All right, we'll hear from some of our colleagues. Commissioner Maps, why don't you go ahead and start us off, please?
Sure. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here we are again, and what a pleasure it is to have everyone in council. Now, I am delighted to join my colleagues on this council in proclaiming May 26 through June 11, 2023, to be the 116th Annual Rose Festival Celebration. The theme for this year's Rose Festival is Focus on Fun. As always, it is great to have the Rose Festival Court with us in chambers today. Since the 1930s, Portland's Rose Festival has included appointing a Rose Festival Court. And one of the things that I try to do every Rose Festival is to read the speeches delivered by members of the Rose Festival Court. The theme for this year's Rose Festival Court speeches is How Are You Focusing on Fun in 2023? So now, colleagues, what I'd like to do is just take a moment to share with you some of the ways our Rose Festival princesses answered that question. For example, Princess Etheridge from Idaby Wells wrote, "The best way to prioritize fun in 2023 is to prioritize myself and to listen to what I need." And Princess Kansu from Roosevelt wrote, "This year, I plan on focusing on fun. By living in the moment, I also plan on focusing on things that bring me joy, like school activities." And Princess Crowe from Franklin wrote, "You have to make your own fun. Fun isn't a feeling you chase, it is a feeling you create." And Princess Ta from Park Rose wrote, "Focusing on fun to me means being present and enjoying those these next few months with my community before walking across that stage and receiving a diploma." And our Princess from Lincoln High School wrote, "For me, my idea of fun is trying new things." Our Princess Welch from Cleveland wrote, "To me, fun is defined in two ways: your attitude and the people that you're having fun with." Now, colleagues and everyone who can hear my voice, those thoughts also capture what this year's Rose Festival is all about. The Rose Festival is an opportunity to have fun with friends, family, and community. This year's Rose Festival is an opportunity for our community to come together. This year's Rose Festival is also an expression of our city's resilience. And this year's Rose Festival is a reminder that Portland's downtown is open, clean, and safe, which is why I'd like to close today by thanking the Rose Court for teaching us about the meaning of the Rose Festival. And colleagues, for that reason and more, I am proud to join you in proclaiming May 26 through June 11, 2023, to be the 116th Annual Rose Festival Celebration. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'll hand it up.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Well, I want to thank everyone for joining us today, the volunteers at the Rose Festival. I do want to call out, as the Commissioner of Public Safety, to protect our participants. It is imperative that we have sufficient volunteers for the parades coming up. So please reach out to the Rose Festival team if you're interested in volunteering. It's absolutely essential that we have numbers on the streets to allow everyone to participate safely. As a reminder, the Portland Bureau of Emergency Management will have our net teams out, that's our neighborhood emergency teams, will be volunteering throughout the festival, but we need more numbers collectively. I do want to also highlight the work of the Bureau of Emergency Management with working with the Rose Festival to make sure each parade is fully staffed. In particular, Katie Wolf, Operations Manager, and Jeremy Van Curran, I hope I pronounced that right, Community Resilience Manager. And if my office can be of any assistance in connecting with volunteer opportunities, please reach out to Commissioner Renee Gonzalez's office. Grace Starpack is our contact there. Thank you again for all you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Maps, for bringing this really bright acknowledgement forward today. I want to thank Marilyn and Contessa and the Rose Festival Association, as well as the Board of Directors, and to the esteemed court royalty who've joined us today. I just want to say congratulations to each of you. You make our city proud, absolutely proud. And we're so excited that we have the Rose Festival back in force, full force this summer. Very, very excited for it. All of us have lifelong memories about going to the festival. And in addition to being a Portland tradition, it feels like a family tradition to all of us as well. And this year is so important because it's an important sign of Portland's vitality and recovery, too. So very eager to feel that connection again. Also, I want to also thank all the dedicated Rose Festival volunteers, there are hundreds of them, who do everything from creating floats to organizing parade routes, as you mentioned, Marilyn. It takes so many, like hundreds of hours of planning and execution to create these amazing memories for Portlanders. So we're very fortunate to have that in our community. And then last, I want to join my colleagues in giving a big appreciation to city staff who've also worked really hard to ensure a great event, and especially our police officers, emergency management staff, who work together on public safety events, transportation staff, our event staff at Prosper Portland, and also the park staff who tend to the waterfront park grounds and other parks during the festival. So just happy festival, everyone, and my family and I will see you down there.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Good morning, and so good to see everyone. Marilyn, you are the Parade Queen, although my spouse would say I'm also a Parade Queen. And Contessa, you're such a great volunteer, your energy is amazing, and I'm so happy that you're the president. It's great to have this girl power at the top this year. I also want to just acknowledge that my very first rose bloomed just yesterday, so I brought it in today. Yeah, I've been growing these things for a while. And because of the cold, remember how cold it was for a while? I was worried. Were you worried? Yeah. So opening night, I'm looking forward to playing with all of you, the Rose Princesses. We get to, it'll be better than last year just because the weather gods, wasn't it like, it was like thunder, lightning, everything, and really, really wet, I'll never forget it. So it was really hard to enjoy the rides. So I'm looking forward to coming down on Friday to helping kick off. And also, I'm hoping the weather gods stay good to you, because I think all three weekends last year were damp, and that's really bad for the gate receipts at the Fun Center. So let's hope that we're lucky all three weekends. And I know I'm looking forward to the Rose Parade, the Junior Rose Parade, the Coronation. And I really, last year when I was in the role of Commissioner Maps, I became a big fan of those dragon boat races, so that'll be fun to be down there for that. Anyway, I'm a little kid excited about the Rose Festival. I used to get up really early with my grandma, like really early, as early as back in the day, you went strawberry picking, you had to get up at like five, and then also for the Rose Parade. And so it was much more fun to go to the Rose Parade and sit on the blanket and wait for it to begin. So I'm really excited that this gives our city a chance to just celebrate, be in a joyful place, activate our streets. And you're going to be a big part of the Rose Court that really brought our city back out of, I think officially out of COVID, out of the slumber that we've been in. And we'll get some joy back on the streets with all of you amazing young women leading the way. So thank you, I look forward to seeing all of you the next few weeks.
Thank you, and I'd like to keep my remarks short. I know you have to go back to school, and I know that the kids from OES probably have to do life crisis. By the way, I forgot to mention, Bobby Lee, Bobby, come out here really quickly. Bobby Lee is my Chief of Staff, meaning he's my most senior administration official. He is a graduate of OES, so fellow aardvark. I'd like to begin with a special thanks to this year's Rose Court for being here, along with you, Marilyn and Contessa. Thank you for your leadership. Earlier this morning, I had the opportunity with Commissioner Maps to meet with these bright young students who make up the Rose Court. I have to say, you're truly an impressive group of young people, and it was an honor to meet you all and to share some thoughts and ideas and to answer some of your questions. For over 100 years, the annual Rose Festival has been part of our city's cultural fabric. And Leslie, I always forget exactly what year my grandmother was on the Court, but I believe it was 1923. That would mean that this would be 100 years ago. She stood in your place, and so this is an important tradition for us and our household. Beyond a family-friendly way to kick off the summer season, the Rose Festival represents a time for our community to come together and to uplift each other. And I think we can all agree, that's something that is very, very important right now. The Rose Festival embodies the best of our city. It demonstrates our diversity, our inclusivity, and our unwavering spirit. I hope Portlanders, visitors alike, can take part in this year's festivities. I love the focus on fun, as this year's theme urges us to do. I want to thank you and the many event organizers and volunteers who make this tradition possible. Now, on behalf of the Portland City Council, and by extension, the city of Portland at large, I would like to read the annual proclamation in honor of this time. Whereas in 1905, Portland Mayor Harry Lane called for an annual festival to put Portland on the map and brand it as the City of Roses. And whereas, the Portland Rose Festival was created in 1907 with a mission to drive economic activity for the region, celebrate Portland's incredible rose climate, and to provide citizens with a common celebration. Whereas, the Portland Rose Festival has been produced by the nonprofit Portland Rose Festival Foundation for 116 years as an annual gift to the city of Portland throughout the evolution and growth of the city of roses, and in 2010 was adopted as Portland's official festival. Whereas, the Portland Rose Festival continues to keep hope alive by producing programs like the Rose Festival Court, the Queen's Coronation, City Fair, Fleet Week, Starlight Parade, Junior Parade, and of course, the Grand Floral Parade. And whereas, the Portland Rose Festival continues to provide an opportunity for people of all backgrounds, experiences, and cultures to join together to celebrate Portland's rich diversity and common humanity. Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim May 26, 2023, through June 11, 2023, to be the 116th Annual Portland Rose Festival Focus on Fun Celebration in Portland, and encourage all Portlanders to come out of their homes and participate in these amazing events celebrating our city. Thank you. Thank you for your time this morning. We appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you out at the Rose Festival.
Give us the wave on the way out. There you go, practice. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, we have a bit of a gap. I understand Commissioner Maps, are you going to pull 402? Let's go ahead and read 402 times certain.
Except the operational feasibility study for regional ferry service include a passenger ferry pilot project and the 2023 Regional Transportation Plan Financially Constrained Project List, and endorse the city's 2023 Regional Transportation Plan Project List submittal.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to pull this one back to my office. Without objection. And colleagues, our next item is a time certain at 10:25, which is in about three and a half minutes. Rather than do something else, let's just take a three and a half minute recess and reconvene at 10:25 so that we keep the agenda in order. We're in recess. Buddy, we are back in session. Thank you, all. Item number 403, please.
Proclaim May 2023 to be Mental Health Awareness Month.
Colleagues, our next item is a proclamation naming May of 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. For this morning's presentation, we're joined by Courtney Gilmore, the Wellness Program Manager, Taisha McCool-Riley, the Mental Health Program Specialist, and Daylin Lawrence, Business Services Administrative Specialist. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's good to see you.
Awesome. I feel like I haven't sat here in a while. So can we begin?
Yeah, please, at your convenience. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Taisha McCool-Riley, Mental Health Program Specialist, housed in the Office of Civic Life. And I would love to think that I could remember everything I need to say this morning, but I am going to read some things as we come together and acknowledge May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Today, we gather in solidarity, acknowledging the prevalence of mental health disabilities and promoting the significance of mental health education, awareness, and advocacy against social stigma related to mental health disabilities. We declare today and this month and days to come that we all can play a part in because we have a chance to ask ourselves, what do I need, or what does the person I care about need to be well? Today, as we gather in honor of Mental Health Awareness Month, we acknowledge that we must center our mental health and our wellness far beyond just one month out of the year, that this must be an intentional endeavor that must seek after a daily base, we must seek after on a daily basis, and for many of us, on a minute-by-minute basis. Seeking to normalize conversations about our mental health and our mental well-being, we then acknowledge our humanness and that we, as human beings, are impacted by our experiences, our thoughts, and our emotions, recognizing that we are not exempt as city employees from experiencing distress, crisis, trauma, hurt, pain, and disappointment. In our humanness, we are complex beings deserving of being acknowledged, validated, included, and nurtured in ways that make us feel valuable, supported, and appreciated. Today, we all stand in solidarity, saying that our mental health matters, our mental health is a priority, and tending to our mental health is a necessity, affirming that taking care of our mental health is equally as important as taking care of our physical health. We can no longer afford to neglect ourselves, as our neglect has began to fester and affect many aspects of our lives, leaving us feeling overwhelmed, stressed, anxious, hopeless, burnt out, restricted, and powerless. The past several years have without a shadow of a doubt taken its toll on each of us in unique ways. We have inherently silenced ourselves to merely survive the storm, resulting in the loss of our connectedness and community. If we are honest, many of us can speak to that reality, unfortunately. Many have exhausted much energy seeking support and resources in an effort to maintain their sanity, build resilience, and center their well-being. And there's a quote that I wanted to share. It says, "Hope is a thing with feathers that perches in the soul and sings a tune without the words and never stops at all. And our deepest struggle lies our greatest strength. Our wombs can become our wisdom. We can turn pain into medicine. We can feel the light sneak through the cracks in our armor. Let's stay a while longer in hope. The future listens to hope." This quote truly reminds us to embrace the feeling, a feeling of expectation and a desire for certain things to change and occur, and to have faith that it can and it shall come to pass. In light of mental health awareness, let us all grab a hold of a desire for peace, tranquility, joy, togetherness, motivation, and meaning, and allow ourselves to nurture that reality for ourselves, our colleagues, and our community at large. Through to, through community, our community acknowledging and sharing our past traumas, it's important for us to share our truths, give one another space for authenticity, while also building one another up, ultimately strengthening our relationships and building our ability to endure the difficulties life continues to throw at us, because as we know, life just keeps on lifing. Your ability to see a person, hear a person, and empathize with their reality is a great starting place. And I'll close with this. Today, I'm reminded of a story that I heard Saturday afternoon while attending TED Talk PDX, and it was Emily Stutzman. It was her time to stand on the X and to give her TED Talk. And she really spoke about the idea of technology eliminating our connectedness as a community, our ability to really be one with one another. And in that, she really talked about how we are often really lonely, but we claim that we're connected because of technology. And so she really put a twist on it, and she really talked about community engagement, about how we actually commune with one another as human beings, right? And in that, what she talked about is one day coming home from school and coming home to seeing her mother being carted out on a stretcher, put into an ambulance, and swiped it off to the hospital from having an aneurysm. And she says, "Her mom made sure everything in the house worked. Dad made sure the bills were paid, but mom made everything work." And she says, "She remember for two years straight, they never had to cook a meal, they never had to worry about how they were going to get to school, they never had to worry about how they're going to get to soccer practice, basketball practice, they never had to worry about how they were going to continue to do life as their mom was recovering from this illness." And at the core of that, it wasn't that because dad stepped up and did everything by himself, it was because the people around them saw that there was a need, and they stepped up and said, "We wanted to, we want to support." And so today, as we honor May as Mental Health Awareness Day, let's talk about what community engagement really looks like for us to commune with one another as human beings on a human level, recognizing that we all endure some hard stuff in life. And if we have people around us that truly care and lean in towards our struggles to support us, we all can make our communities a better place, and that goes for us as employees at the City of Portland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Courtney Gilmore, and I am the City Strong Health and Wellbeing Program Manager. And I'm here today to discuss Mental Health Awareness Month. And a few years ago, when we did the Mental Health Awareness Proclamation, Taisha did a beautiful speech on my why. And so I thought about that over the last couple of years, and my why, when it comes to mental health, mental well-being, not just for my community, but also within the workplace, is stigma, shame. I have personal experience, live experience, when it comes to mental health challenges, mental health crises within my family, my circle, within the workplace as well. So one of the things that I want to talk about when it comes to the workplace is that as a collective, we need to talk openly about mental health in the workplace and to reduce stigma and discrimination for people who are less capable to cope. For many of us, work is an essential part of what we do every day. We have to show up and serve the people. Making sure that the workplace is a safe environment where we can discuss and talk about mental health issues will help mitigate the impact of the past three years. A lot has happened over the past three years, social unrest, a pandemic that impacted everyone to one degree or the other. And it has impacted our life personally and professionally. But that has made us more resilient. However, we have a role to play by caring for and supporting our families, our friends, and our work colleagues, by continuing to look after ourselves, our well-being, and not being afraid to talk and seek help when needed regarding mental health and mental well-being. So what are we doing as far as Taisha? So what are we doing as far as Taisha and myself, City Strong, our benefits team? We are continuing to provide information and resources from our plan providers, our EAP. And within the last year, we have trained five additional Mental Health First Aid instructors. You may be wondering, what is Mental Health First Aid? This is a program that has been in effect for the last four-plus years. It started off with Taisha, then myself. And then we trained Daylon, along with four other people. Mental Health First Aid is something very similar to physical first aid. We assist someone that may be in a mental health crisis. We're not therapists. We're not, you know, trying to fix the problem. We're assessing, and then we're going to move them on to a professional. So this has been an ongoing project that we have been working on for the last couple of years. And I'm glad to say that we have, um, have started rolling out trainings to different workgroups, bureaus, and the lead program as well to train our managers and supervisors on how to handle an employee that may be in a mental health crisis. There are employees who are, who come into the office or come that work in the field that might be, may be in crisis. And so it's important for our leaders, managers, and supervisors to be able to have those tools and skills when it comes to that. In addition, for Mental Health Awareness Month, we do have one, we have a couple of activities. We have an event this, this morning after the proclamation where you can meet in, a meet and greet where you can talk to us. We have resources for mental health for city employees. And then we also have a DIY self-care workshop tomorrow from 12 to 3:00 as well. So thank you for having me here, and I would like to pass it on to Daylon.
And those things will take place in the Portland Building on the first floor?
Yes, in the Portland Building.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Daylon Lawrence. I'm housed in the Bureau of Human Resources, specifically the Business Services Team. But I'm also, as Courtney mentioned, a certified Mental Health First Aid instructor. So first, I'd like to just say that May is my favorite month of the year for multiple reasons. One, flowers become in full bloom. It's also the month of my birthday. But for this purposes, for today's purpose, it's Mental Health Awareness Month. So like a flower, mental health starts off as just a budding seed that you water, you fertilize, you leave it in the sunlight to grow. In order for us as individuals, as humans, to bloom into our best selves, we must tend to our own mental health in the same way you would tend to our garden. With that being said, I hope that city employees, city council, join me in help watering the garden that is the City of Portland. And I hope that I get to see you in one of my Mental Health First Aid training classes. And that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And does that complete the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you, all three of you. We appreciate it. Commissioner Mapp?
Sure. I want to start out by thanking the panel for their work in this field in today's presentation. And to my colleagues on this council, I just want to say I'm glad to join you in proclaiming May 2023 to be Mental Health Month here in Portland, Oregon. This month, we renew our commitment to ridding our society of the stigma associated with mental illness. We encourage those living with mental health challenges to get the help they need. We reaffirm our commitment to ensure that those who need help have access to the support, acceptance, and resources they deserve. And we pledge solidarity with the families who need our support as well. In 2019, nearly 52 million adults experienced some form of mental illness. Today, that number is likely much higher. The pandemic and the resulting economic crisis has impacted the mental health of millions of Americans. And to make matters even worse, Oregon's mental health system is famously amongst the worst in the nation. That's why Portland needs to commit to ensuring that people living with mental health conditions are treated with compassion, respect, and understanding. This council, our partners at Multnomah County, the state of Oregon, and the federal government must work together to do a better job of addressing our community's unmet mental health needs. So let's strive to ensure that people living with mental health conditions know that they are not alone, that help exists, and that the possibility of healing and thriving is real. We must also work to ensure that everyone, especially underserved communities, has access to affordable, high-quality, and evidence-based mental health care. That's what, that's why this Mental Health Month, we should call upon citizens, government agencies, healthcare providers, and research institutions to raise mental health awareness and to continue helping Americans live longer, happier, healthier lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll hand it back to you. Great. Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Taisha, thank you so much for that really wonderful way to center us and reminding us it's about the why and what a resource you are. So anyway, thank you, panelists. It's a great way to acknowledge it's such an important month that we today firmly acknowledge. Last week, I was at the opening of a Safewards Village Peninsula Crossing, and it was getting a little heated. So I thought I'd do something and ask the audience, how many of you love somebody, including yourself, and someone in your family, your friend network, that suffers from either behavioral health or mental health? And about half the hands went up really quickly because they're confident they've been doing their work and their stigma work has been, you could tell they were on it. But I noticed how others slowly raised their hands. So the fact was, most of the group who's outside had their hands up. And I think that's just a great visualization of lifting the stigma. It's just absurd to think that we're separate from it. I really appreciate that you brought up how important it is to have real in-person contact. I really do think, and you see it definitely in the middle schools and the schools in general, children don't lie. So what we're experiencing in our schools right now from coming out of the pandemic and being holed up and not having the chance, like these wonderful kids, to be in person and experiencing life how it's, I think, supposed to be lived. So I just think it's such an important time to go hard on this topic. And I think, as Commissioner Mapp's mentioned, we just live in a state that has been so behind on doing the work. I always say, my state, my city gets locked up in perfection. And because of that, we, we don't focus on the good. And this is messy work. And just like anyone that experiences mental health, we know that we might fall down. We're going to be in a hole. But the fact is, we know that we can surrender. We know we can ask for help. And we know that we can rise up. And that's how we should be measured in life. It's not that we fall down, because that's inevitable. It's how we get back up. And so I think it's that compassion that good people like you are helped promoting. Just a couple more stats on Oregon. As mentioned, we actually do rank last, 51, because we include DC, in terms of mental health and substance use and also in access to care. That's embarrassing. We should all feel ashamed about that. And I think what always puzzles me is how we only have one psychiatric hospital, one. And that's in Salem, the Oregon State Hospital. In 95, we closed Damas State Hospital because there were some things that needed to improve there. But we just closed it. And that was in 1995. And 28 years later, we have nothing to replace those 400-plus beds. So when people look around and they wonder why we have so many people suffering on our streets that clearly need extensive help, it's because we're not providing those services. And so I just think it's so important that we continue to just tell that true story. And I'm really proud to be on a city council that's acknowledging the truth of this crisis that's now showing up in such uncomfortable ways on our street. And the denial must go away. And again, we all know somebody that's suffering. And so I stand in solidarity with all of you. I'm grateful that you're here today. And I'm grateful, as a council, that we took some time today to acknowledge mental health awareness. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Rubio?
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward again today. And I just want to thank each of you for your presence here and for raising this up. I just want to affirm what you've already said, that this is truly about seeing people and implementing trauma-informed practices here that center these voices and experience of people living with mental illness and mental health challenges. And especially when it comes to our employees who, who we are seeing pour their hearts and their energy and their time into the city every single day. And in previous years, you've talked to us about how clearly the pandemic had an impact on that for a number of our employees and our families. So I appreciate you reminding us about our responsibility to take active, conscious steps to support our staff, and especially now. And also, I encourage us, all of us, to follow the advice that you all shared about, we, you know, we have a responsibility to be informed and also to be trained for ourselves, but also for our teams and, and for our colleagues as well. So just thank you for continuing to lift this up. It has now taken hold, and it is a part, it should be. But I see that developing more a part of our workplace culture around wellness. So, and I thank each of you for that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez?
I just want to thank you for your lovely words and also want to acknowledge comments by my colleagues highlighting the more acute manifestations of mental illness that are very much in our face on a daily basis on the city. But I do want to reiterate, if we want to raise up our community and really address mental health, we do have to fully acknowledge that I think we're all fragile right now. I think post-pandemic, post-response to the pandemic, there are scars, maybe in all of us. And that's more complex to solve. That's sometimes doesn't manifest itself clinically. It's, it's how we, what we do day-to-day on our everyday lives. And I guess it's just to call out a little bit to our community, the essential part of giving each other grace, recognizing there's fragility throughout our community, whether someone's manifesting, manifesting itself in a real expressive way or it's under the hood. Certainly for our employees, I understand sometimes the fear to return to the office. But simultaneously, we've got to find a way to work together again, to play together again, sometimes to cry together again, the importance of that connection, that tangible peace. And it's also as a reminder, the essential work of building communities and building cities and sometimes rebuilding them. And that's essential for us to, to return to a healthier time, much less address some of these scars. So thanks again for your lovely words.
Thank you.
I'd like to also express my gratitude to you. I think we've all seen mental health issues being highlighted in recent years. As you all indicated, this has been a traumatic period in the history of our city, in our nation, and indeed at the household level. We've been challenged in ways personally we've never been challenged before. I like the two-pronged approach here, acknowledging that our community needs us as leaders, as civic leaders, to work with the community, to work with other governments, to help address the withering behavioral health needs in our community and acknowledging that substance use disorders are also complicating the mental health issues for many on our streets. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that this has been a very difficult period for public servants. As our society has been challenged at every level, there is a human tendency to ask, who's to blame? And it is disappointing to see that people who serve the public in a variety of capacities, including public servants, are often the recipients of some of the anger, the frustration, and the anxiety that the public feels. And I'm not saying it's exclusively public servants. I mean, how many times do we have to read about flight attendants being attacked for serving the wrong peanuts to people on an airliner? But public servants right now seem to be in the target. And so it's up to us, as employers collectively, to make sure that the people who work amongst us and in our ranks are well-cared for and seen and heard and understood as they not only struggle with the challenges of their employment, but they also have the dual responsibility of struggling with challenges at home. And that is no small feat. And I really appreciate this opportunity to level-set and re-acknowledge that truth. So it's my honor, on behalf of this city council, to read a proclamation underscoring all the great comments that you three made. Thank you. Whereas the city takes pride in joining Americans throughout the country in recognizing May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. And whereas the city affirms that Mental Health Awareness Month promotes awareness of the importance of tending to our mental health as it's essential and acknowledges that those living with mental health disabilities are deserving of care, of understanding, of compassion, and of pathways to hope, healing, recovery, fulfillment, and inclusivity. And whereas the city acknowledges the continuing need to dismantle systems of oppression for members of our workforce and communities that experience discrimination or barriers for accessing mental health services. And whereas the city commits to establishing an ongoing dialogue with advocates, community organizations, and government entities with the intention of taking collective action towards supporting a healthy society. And whereas the city supports mental health awareness as an opportunity to inspire and embolden meaningful action within our organization, to reinforce the health and safety of the greater Portland community. And whereas promoting a psychologically healthy culture is a priority through training and building leader skillsets that support mental health and positive relationships and equipping workers to manage daily stress and handle the inevitable challenges that affect their mental well-being. And whereas increased awareness and understanding, support, tools, resources, and capacity building help to build a healthy foundation from which the city workforce can build upon to strengthen ourselves, build resilience, and collectively cope and heal from past adversity and be better equipped to manage future adversities. And whereas we recognize the importance of providing employees with a voice to be able to identify their needs and express how they would like to be supported, creating space to foster a sense of well-being that's felt throughout promoting feelings of being part of an environment that recognizes and values employees, contributing to breaking down barriers and enabling employees' access to various learning and development opportunities focused on collective healing and holistic well-being from varying perspectives, to ensure inclusion in a person-centered approach to elevating mental wellness. Now, therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim May of 2023 to be Mental Health Awareness Month in Portland and encourage all residents to observe this month. Thank you. Excellent presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I shout out, is it Matt? What's Matt's last name? Courtney? Blankus?
Je veux vous remercier Matt. Matt et moi avons co-écrit la proclamation. Et je veux lui donner des props. Il n'est pas capable de nous rejoindre aujourd'hui. Mais je voulais juste s'assurer qu'il a ses props pour avoir contribué.
Merci à vous et merci à Matt. Ça a été bien écrit. Bien écrit. Merci. All right, merci Art Verks. Bye bye, bonne journée. Prenez soin de vous. Vous allez retourner à l'école maintenant?
On va à la base. Next answer.
Sachez que vous devez dire à vos parents que je dis que vous devez retourner à l'école. Tu vois, c'est comme ça que nous nous trompons, non? All right, collègues, nous allons passer au plan normal, s'il vous plaît. Item 411.
Aménage l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes intergouvernementales avec la municipalité de Multnomah pour étendre le terme de l'accord.
Collègues, notre premier item du plan normal est 411, une amende pour étendre l'accord intergouvernemental entre la ville de Portland et la municipalité de Multnomah en rapport avec l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes pour une année supplémentaire fiscale, l'année 2023-2024. Comme vous, je suis déçue par les ressources sous-achetées par l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes. Ces fonds substantiels que nous avons appris la semaine dernière ont largement été dépensés à partir de notre support régional des services de logement fiscaux. Beaucoup trop dans notre ville sont vivants dans des conditions dangereuses et dégradées. C'est une catastrophe humanitaria pour nos voisins inéquits et cela crée aussi des problèmes de santé mentale, de sécurité et de vivabilité pour la communauté en général. Nous sommes dans une situation d'urgence et nous devons dépenser les fonds disponibles pour nous pour le but pour lequel ils étaient destinés, qui est de traiter la crise. Nous avons aussi appris des ressources supplémentaires inattendues totales à 25 millions. Je suis reconnaissant que le président de la municipalité, Jessica Vega Peterson, a accepté de défendre 20 millions de dollars des fonds inattendus pour aller vers les sites de shelter temporaires alternatifs de la ville sur une base continue. Je remercie que la présidente championne ce financement pour les sites de shelter alternatifs temporaires à la comédie des commissaires de la municipalité. Ce financement est au-dessus des services de cirque que la municipalité a accepté de fournir à ces sites, services de santé comportementale, services de traitement de troubles de la santé, et placements de logement. La présidente Vega Peterson est un grand leader et un grand partenaire. Et je suis honoré de co-championner cette addition nécessaire à notre continuum de soin en sa compagnie. Le nouvel partenariat entre la ville et la municipalité me donne la confiance que nous pouvons construire un système de soin pour tous les Portlanders, surtout ceux les plus vulnérables. Je veux aussi remercier le gouverneur Tina Kotek pour son soutien constant pour nos sites de shelter alternatifs temporaires. Le gouverneur Kotek a financé 140 pôles et six mois de coûts opérationnels pour notre premier site à travers notre ordre exécutif et le plan all-in. Nous traversons dans la bonne direction et je regarde l' continued forte partenariat de la municipalité, de l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes et le État en train de travailler ensemble pour réduire l'inéquité de l'épouse et fournir des services aux gens qui expérimentent l'épouse partout dans notre ville. Cependant, nous devons rester responsables et clair à l'œil. Pendant que nous avons fait des progrès dans les cinq derniers mois, nous devons continuer à mettre en œuvre des changements opérationnels et politiques pour garder cette relation intacte. Enfin, cette amende, contrairement à des extensions précédentes à l'IGA avec l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes, contient des clauses affirmant que la ville révisera sa relation avec l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes en décembre 2023 pour déterminer si des mesures doivent être prises pour dissoudre le partenariat ou autrement, pour se mettre à partage avec un partenariat plus long. L'amende contient également une clause affirmant que la ville et la municipalité doivent fournir toute information demandée en écrit par l'autre partie. Une autre modification importante cette année est la recrutement de Dan Field en tant que directeur de l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes. Dan est le bon personne pour le poste et il sait que ce n'est pas une tâche facile. Dan est ici, où est-il? Je ne sais pas où... Dan est ici. Dan, bienvenue. Merci d'être ici aujourd'hui. Nous le remercions. Nous remercions votre leadership. Je suis content que j'ai dit des choses gentilles à propos de vous. Avec vous là-bas. La présidente Vega Peterson et moi avons toute confiance en Dan et en son leadership et la présidente et moi avons promis que nous allons continuer à vous soutenir et travailler avec vous et aider à surmonter les défis inévitable que vous allez expérimenter dans ce nouveau rôle. La présidente et moi, avec nos employés, nous soutiendrons. J'ai déjà dit ça. Cette extension fournit une opportunité de start à nouveau entre nos gouvernements et pour l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes. Avant de passer à l'issue, je voudrais passer à l'amende pour supprimer la clause d'urgence sur cet item. Peux-je vous donner une seconde?
Une seconde.
J'ai une seconde de la commissaire Ryan. Y a-t-il une discussion ultérieure sur la supprimerie de la clause d'urgence? Si non, appelez le rôle.
Ryan.
Oui.
Gonzalez.
Je pense que c'est important que nous créions de l'espace pour la ville et la municipalité à travailler sur des problèmes très difficiles concernant cet accord et le flux général des fonds. À cause de cette raison, je vote oui.
Maps.
Oui.
Rubio.
Oui.
Wheeler.
Oui, l'amende est adoptée. La commissaire Ryan, je crois que vous avez aussi une amende que vous aimeriez proposer. Est-ce exact?
Oui. Je voudrais faire une motion pour substituer Examen A dans l'ordre proposé par le maire avec cette version. Alors, dois-je lire à partir de whereas C?
Donc, la commissaire Ryan, je pense que dans l'intérêt du temps, je pense que vous alliez juste souligner les sections qui ont été ajoutées en fonction de l'examen A qui a été soumis avec l'ordre du maire. Je veux dire, vous pouvez lire tout le truc si vous le voulez, mais si vous juste... Ma compréhension est que c'est les recits C et D et les directives...
Et trois.
...du... Les directives, les sections deux et trois.
Merci. Okay. Même si les indicateurs communautaires mesurables sont destinés à évaluer et améliorer la teneur d'épouse, il n'y a pas encore de déterminement. Le conseil municipal dirige le principal officier administratif pour commencer une révision complète et une évaluation dans les six prochaines mois de l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes entre la municipalité de Multnomah et la ville de Portland, comme mentionné dans l'examen A, encompassant mais pas limité aux domaines suivants d'évaluation. Collectivement, les mesures. Un. Produire des indicateurs communautaires quantitatifs afin que nous puissions aligner sur des objectifs partout et monitorer le progrès vers les objectifs agreed upon. Deux. Une fois que les indicateurs communautaires sont déterminés et pour atteindre les résultats de population, la ville exige à l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes d'établir des sous-indicateurs comme provision dans les contrats de fournisseur de services et... Trois. Parce que différentes populations ont des stratégies différentes, l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes coordonnera avec la ville et les solutions communautaires pour déterminer des stratégies d'intervention efficaces visant des segments spécifiques de la population de la ville et de la municipalité, y compris mais pas limité à les individus qui sont chroniquement éspèce d'épouse, les travailleurs frontiers essentiels qui expérimentent la difficulté de logement et les individus vivant à des revenus fixés, inclus des personnes avec des disabilities, les adultes et les individus de diagnostic dual pour des conditions de santé mentale. Et D. Même si, suite à l'évaluation du principal officier administratif, produira un rapport détaillé délinquant les résultats de la révision et d'évaluation, y compris recommandations pour des modifications potentielles ou améliorations à l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes intergouvernementales. Maintenant, je vais à C correctement. Budget annuel. Annuellement... Ça a changé un peu dans les deux dernières heures. J'espère que j'ai la bonne.
Peux-je juste clarifier? Je crois qu'il y a... Y a-t-il de nouveau du langage dans deux ou est-ce le même? Quelqu'un peut clarifier? Tony? C'est le même? Okay, donc vous avez raison. Alors juste trois, budget annuel.
Correct. Budget annuel. Annuellement, la municipalité présentera le partage de l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes de l'engagement 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 à la ville, leur revue et la réaction. Pour... Pour la revue... Pour... Il devrait être là. Pour la revue et la réaction. Commençant à l'année fiscale 2023-2024, la municipalité inclut dans leur draft le projet de présentation de l'Office de budget, un plan pour réduire toute dépense de la ville, toutes les comptes de dépense de la ville qui ont été dépassés ou dépensés depuis l'année précédente. Comme condition prévue avant que la municipalité dépense les fonds appropriés par la municipalité pour l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes pour l'année fiscale, la municipalité doit d'abord recevoir de la ville une résolution adoptée par le conseil municipal de Portland en accord avec les appropriations de budget de la municipalité pour l'Office de services de la恤 des personnes pour l'année fiscale. Je pense que ça conclut correctement.
Très bien. Y a-t-il une seconde? Ou une discussion? La commissaire, j'ai une question. A-t-on été partagé avec la municipalité?
Oui, nous avons eu une réunion hier soir avec la présidente Vega Peterson.
Et quel était la réaction de la présidente?
La réaction de la présidente dans cette conversation, que nous avons partagée avec votre personnel à travers ma chef de staff, était que ils étaient très appréciés du dialogue. Ils étaient vraiment tous à l'aise, surtout un, deux et trois. La présidente partage notre désir d'avoir l'accountabilité, de permettre aux électeurs et investisseurs qui sont les impôts de savoir où nous sommes et où nous allons et l'accountabilité et le stream line à la contrats de fournisseur qui regardera aussi ces sous-indicateurs que ils mesureront dans leurs contrats pour plus d'accountabilité.
Très bien. Je le suis. Vous voulez laisser ça ouvrir à travers le témoignage? Ou quel est votre préférence?
Je pense que c'est toujours important de le garder ouvert.
Okay.
Quand on fait le témoignage.
Nous laisserons ça ouvert. Très bien.
Et plus important, il y a aussi eu dialogue avec Dan Field lui-même.
Okay, good.
Comme nous amenons un nouveau leader.
Good. Et avons-nous en fait une présentation sur ça? Ou allons-nous directement à la publicité? Y a-t-on des personnes inscrites, Kealan?
Nous avons une personne inscrite.
Très bien.
Jim Atwood.
Bienvenue.
Merci.
Et si vous pourriez juste... Même si c'est redondé, pouvez-vous dire votre nom pour le record?
Je suis à la moitié morte. Pouvez-vous parler?
Oui, pouvez-vous, s'il vous plaît, dire votre nom pour le record?
Oh, of course.
Merci, c'est requis. Merci.
Bonjour.
Bonjour.
Je suis Jim Atwood et je veux soutenir votre... La défense du maire pour les campsites pour nos personnes inéquites. Et je pense que certains d'entre eux sont mieux offerts dans les pôles et campsites plutôt que dans les bâtiments multifamiliaux. Je pense que vous avez un item plus tard dans l'agenda connectant la santé mentale et la réparation de la consommation de substances avec ces services et leurs campsites et pôles. Et je veux soutenir ça aussi. Et je pense que beaucoup de ces gens seront simplement heureux dans leurs campsites et pôles plutôt que dans les bâtiments multifamiliaux. Comme vous le savez, je suis un défenseur de la logement downtown et des bâtiments en brique. Et donc, quand je suis ici, je voudrais faire un petit appel pour les bâtiments en brique. Prenez par exemple le feu... Le feu de l'appartement de May la semaine dernière. Maintenant, nous ne savons pas qui a commencé ce feu, mais nous savons que beaucoup de personnes inéquites de la Blanche House ont récemment déménagé dans le bâtiment. Et je veux souligner que nous ne savons pas que quelqu'un l'a commencé. Mais si ça se trouve que l'un d'eux l'a commencé, je pense que ça donnerait raison de réconsidérer les... Certaines des politiques de logement qui la municipalité traite. Et plus important, je continue à entendre les employés de la ville se référer avec le maire comme un bâtiment dangereux. Je veux juste souligner quelques qualités de ce bâtiment. C'était un bâtiment en brique historique. Le feu a commencé un matin la semaine dernière. Il a brûlé toute la nuit et jusqu'à la prochaine matin. Si ça avait été en construction de frame, le bâtiment aurait brûlé très rapidement et nous n'aurions pas le temps de sauver les nombreux résidents qui ont en fait été sauvés du bâtiment. J'ai passé par le maire ce matin et le bâtiment est toujours en place. Si ça avait été en construction de frame, il serait un tas d'asches et probablement des os humains dans les asches. Donc, il y a un bénéfice à des bâtiments en brique. Et ils ont aussi pris le crédit pour sauver les bâtiments adjoints, qui sont en frame, et ils seraient aussi un tas d'asches. Mais je pense que c'était les bâtiments en brique plus probablement que non qui ont sauvé les bâtiments en construction de frame adjoint. Et rapidement en ce qui concerne les terres pluies, toutes les images que j'ai vues, les bâtiments qui ont s'effondrés dans la récente mega terreur turquie étaient des images de slabes de ciment et de rebarres en steel. Et les gens étaient enterrés et attendaient la mise en place de matériel pesant pour les sauver. J'ai lu une histoire douloureuse d'un homme qui a porté la main de sa mère pendant qu'elle mourait en attendant la mise en place de matériel pesant. Si quelqu'un est enterré sous un tas de briques, les voisins, les voisins et d'autres secours peuvent lancer des briques. Donc, encore une fois, ce sont les riches architectes et ingénieurs qui sont à profit financièrement des retrofits seismiques qui bâchent les bâtiments en brique comme ils le sont. Vous remarquez qu'ils n'ont pas offert à designer ces retrofits pro bono. Et en conclusion, je veux mentionner que les bâtiments en brique ont une importance architecturale et historique que les bâtiments nouveaux simplement ne possèdent pas. Ils font une partie importante de la fabrique de la ville de Portland. Et ils... Ils font Portland, Portland. Les bâtiments en brique ont des caractéristiques de sécurité importantes sur d'autres types de construction. Toute la construction a ses avantages et ses conséquences. Mais en conclusion, je voudrais dire que nous devrions montrer aux bâtiments en brique le amour et le respect que ils ont. Merci beaucoup.
Merci. Je remercie votre perspective sur ça. C'est utile. Merci.
Ça conclut le témoignage.
Ça conclut la publicité? All right, donc, c'est évidemment une première lecture, mais nous ferons le rôle sur l'amende. Quel discussion ultérieure sur l'amende de la commissaire Ryan? La commissaire Maps?
Um...
Et puis la commissaire Gonzalez.
Franchement, j'aimerais entendre un dialogue de mes collègues, surtout de mes collègues qui ont été impliqués dans les négociations avec la municipalité. Donc, je vais passer à la commissaire Gonzalez et Mr. Mayor si vous avez une perspective sur l'amende. Je serais intéressé aussi.
La commissaire Gonzalez.
Sure. Donc, je veux décomposer quelques pièces dans l'amende. Qu'est-ce qui a été discuté durant vraiment les 24 heures dernières? Qu'est-ce qui est inclus ici? Qu'est-ce qui n'est pas inclus? Tout d'abord, nous avons un mécanisme de révision vraiment championné par la commissaire Ryan's office. Et je vais lui parler de ce qu'elle essaie d'adresser, même si je pense que c'est quelque chose de self-explanatory. Deux autres items qui font partie de la discussion est, un, le gouvernement général. Vous savez, comment sont pris les décisions clés à l'Office de services de la protection? Quel est le involvement de la ville dans ça? Les changements de gouvernance sont largement exclués de cet amendement proposé. Et ça a été en réponse à des commentaires de la municipalité, selon ce que je comprends. Je ne suis pas sûr que ça soit bien avec moi, mais il y a une analyse partielle nécessaire à propos de nos droits existants contractuels avec la municipalité que nous ne pouvons pas fullen lever comme ville dans le statut quo avant l'amende. Et donc, je pense que créer de l'espace pour complètement, vous savez... Pour approprier une évaluation, nous devons revenir, ouvrir l'existant accord, évaluer les droits que nous avons là-bas et s'assurer que nous les pouvons pleinement lever comme des stewards pour des dollars de la ville. Le prochain pièce est le mécanisme de budget annuel. Et c'est la section trois de l'amende. Il y a vraiment deux portions de ça. Il y a une sorte de pré-révision du budget de la ville. Et puis, deuxièmement, il y a essentiellement des droits d'approbation une fois que ça passe par le processus de budget de la municipalité. Je pense que la municipalité a vu certains de ça. Je ne suis pas sûr qu'ils ont vu cette version exacte. Donc, nous verrons quelles sont leurs commentaires à l'envers. Je voudrais, vous savez, je voudrais reconnaître que nous avons discuté une... Une certaine firmabilité dans notre capacité à participer au processus de budget avant que ça ne circule. Vous savez, si nous aurons des droits d'écouter, d'expliquer des catégories spécifiques. Je ne suis pas sûr que la première phrase nous donne ces droits à l' extent- Vous savez, et je fais ce que je voudrais. Mais je remercie que nous avons le droit de... Le mot n'est pas utilisé dans l'amende, mais le droit de veto du budget une fois que ça passe par le processus de la municipalité. Donc, c'est là où ça se situe. Je pense que la municipalité a regardé des versions de ça. Je ne suis pas sûr qu'ils ont vu cette version entière. Et je pense qu'ils sont... Ce que je encourage tout le monde à faire est de faire de l'espace dans la semaine ou les semaines futures pour la ville et la municipalité de continuer à trouver du terrain commun sur ça à venir. Je veux souligner une pièce dernière. Le statut quo n'est pas durable. Je ne supporterai pas l'extension de cet accord sans un travail substantiel de réparation du budget et à un certain degré de gouvernance. Et je pense que cette amende est un pas dans la bonne direction. Je remercie la collaboration de la commissaire Ryan sur ça. À un certain degré, je crois que l'office du maire était impliqué dans certaines pièces de ça, même si c'est tout arrivé en temps réel.[1640.90] it's all been happening in real time, so they may not have had a chance to fully digest every aspect of this. But we are distributing $43-plus million as a city to the Joint Office. The outcomes on our street are not where we want them to be. And separately, the city is spending substantial dollars directly addressing the homeless crisis and its various manifestations. That's true from Portland Street Response. It's true in our Community Health Division through chat, and providing medical care to homeless individuals. It is certainly true in the Community Safety Division and all of its various components that it's spending directly. It's true in parks and providing emergency shelter, and it's true in P-Bot and cleaning up derelict vehicles. We are spending substantial dollars. So the status quo is not satisfactory. We are not getting the return on investment as a city we need. And I, again, I think this amendment is a step in the right direction, but I will not support renewal of the agreement without substantial rework in the basic operations of that relationship.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Maps?
I just have a question for you. I know you're deeply involved in the crafting of this contract and whatnot. Do you have any reaction to Commissioner Ryan's amendment?
I, I do. And granted, it's, it's been somewhat fluid. And, and as you indicated, Commissioner Ryan, it's, it's been changed as recently, I believe, as this morning. And my, my main question was really whether or not the county had seen this, or whether they would be surprised by it. The impression I have, having spoken to the chair, is that she is supportive of any other information we need in order to be comfortable with the contract. And my experience with her thus far has been that she's been very open to that. The conversations my staff and I have had with her and her staff over the last few days have been very productive, is how I would describe them. I think she sees our perspective, and indeed, I understand more about her perspective as well, and some of the challenges she may face in her present position with regard to the management of the Joint Office. I believe the chair is prepared to work with us and collaborate. I believe the public demands it. And so from my perspective, I will support the amendment acknowledging that there, there may be some rework or more information that's required. I know that Commissioner Ryan and his staff have put a, a ton of time and energy into this. I would ask my staff at this point, is there anything else I should be aware of, Skylar? Or anything else I should have said that I didn't say, or anything I said that I should not have said, since you're the one who engages in most of these conversations on my behalf?
Okay.
Okay, all good. So I'll, I'll just be transparent. My intention is to support Commissioner Ryan's amendment, understanding that over the course of the next week, that may precipitate some other conversations, as Commissioner Gonzalez has indicated.
Uh, thank you. And I have a couple of process questions. So we stripped out the emergency, or the emergency clause here, so it's basically a regular ordinance. Let's say council passes it this week. Does the county also have to weigh in and have a vote and pass this contract? Or do you? So I've been seeing a head shake from staff. So they, they have, the county will need to vote on this, too. And because this is an, a regular item, as opposed to what an emergency ordinance, if we pass this on the 24th, the next time, if we pass it on the 31st of May, the ordinance would go into effect 30 days after that, which is roughly the last day of June. So we have about 24 hours breathing room. I think the contract expires on the end of June, so we'll have about one day's space to make sure that we don't have a gap in at least our legal paperwork.
Yes, I'll, I'll defer to legal counsel, but I, I believe we've cut it even more closely than that in the past. Lindley, do you have any thoughts on that?
While it is ideal to have it complete and effective before the date it expires, council has in the past been able to ratify contracts, even if they expire and have a, you know, essentially pass it the week after and have it ratified backwards, too. So it's doable.
Okay. Thank you very much. And as long as I have the floor, I'll just put my cards on the table. I appreciate Commissioner Ryan's amendments in, in this space. I am dissatisfied with this contract. I don't understand why we keep just extending this without actually addressing the concerns that I know each and every member of this council has. I find it utterly mystifying that we could give one of our partners 40x million dollars, and we have almost no influence over how these dollars get spent. None of us would have a contract within our own bureaus for something like this. If I were to build a, a piece of infrastructure, I would not give a contractor $40 billion and then say, "Build what you want." I find this to be crazy and unsustainable. So I am likely to vote yes, aye on the amendment today. I cannot at all guarantee that I will be a yes vote on the final vote next week, though, because I don't understand why we continue to be here, and I can't imagine why we would give away tens of millions of dollars every year without having an influence over how we spend it. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll on, sorry, Commissioner Gonzalez, I'm sorry.
I, I want to follow up on one piece that Commissioner Maps is alluding to, and we may bring up the, at the appropriate time, bring up Mr. Garcia from the City Attorney's Office. One of the mechanisms that exist, as I understand it, under our existing relationship, we send 35 million to the county. We separately have approved, you know, another 8.3 and change that goes to the county as well. If I get the numbers right, it's around 43 million total. We, there, there's an argument, we have the right right now to specify the use of those dollars when we send it, that we make a condition on sending the dollars when we send it to the county. And whether we are fully leveraging that, those rights that exist today is an open question. So I share with you the deep concerns about a blank check without commitments as to how those dollars are going to be spent, without having real ability to exercise our fiduciary duties as, our responsibility to the city and to manage city dollars. Where I'm hoping that we create some space in the coming weeks is that we evaluate more cl, and that we articulate very clearly what are existing rights under the contract to mandate, you know, when we send dollars to the county, how those dollars are spent. And certainly, they can say, "We're not going to agree," and they could send the money back. I mean, that's, so I think that's something that we need to be crystal clear as a council, what are existing rights there, and whether we're appropriately, for lack of a better term, leveraging those rights. Second, governance. There is a, and I don't know if Mr. Garcia is available right now from the City Attorney's Office. We can, you know, at the appropriate time, have him chine in. Just understanding the existing, oh, I think he's here. So understanding the existing approval mechanisms in the contract that are spelled out currently that may not, you know, be fully leveraged as we go. And when we, again, one of the pieces that was removed from this proposed amendment was to address some sort of executive committee or governance committee. And there's an argument that already exists in the contract, and we're not really leveraging it. So I'd let Mr. Garcia speak to that, if he's, if he's here. Is that okay, Mayor?
Yeah, of course. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. For the record, Tony Garcia, Chief Deputy in the City Attorney's Office. What would you like me to speak to, Commissioner?
So the, and I want to, I may be getting the acronym wrong. Was it called the ELT, or there was a mechanism? What is the mechanism for governance at a high level under the existing agreement?
In Amendment 13 to the contract, an ELG group was created. That's the Executive Leadership Group. It includes four individuals, the commissioner in charge of the Housing Bureau, one member of their staff, the chair for the county, and one member of their staff. And they're to get together to meet and make policy decisions regarding the budget and how funds are spent.
And how prescriptive are, is the ELG's authority under the existing agreement? High level? We don't necessarily need.
It's not very specific. It's aspirational, mostly, that the parties will work together.
Okay. So colleagues, that may not be sufficient from my vantage point, but at least I think we create some space to dialogue on, do we build that up further in the coming weeks? I know the county had some concerns about what we might have proposed there, and so I understand over the last 24 hours, but I do think that's an opportunity. Let's revisit that mechanism. Many of us here have experienced the nonprofit world and for-profit world, where we set up a governance model, where you have a small set that's going to help guide this. We have to create space for the executive director to actually operate the Joint Office. So it's, we don't want to be in his business in every respect, but that, that we can look at each other with a straight face and conclude we're providing sufficient governance from, from the city's perspective. So I, I would just put that out, but I, we may need to beef that up a little bit from my vantage point.
And I can work with each one of your staffs, if you're, if you're able to provide some commentary and feedback of what you'd specifically like to see. I can workshop that with the county and their council.
One last area of questions. So the 35 million plus 8.3, you know, I, that's the way I think of it. What are our legal rights in terms of sending that money to the county and dictating how those dollars are spent? Again, obviously, county can come back and say no, but just walk us through our existing rights under existing contract. When we send money to the county, what are, what are our rights there?
Well, I think our rights are whatever we've established in the contract. So at this time would be when we would put any qualifications or specifics as to what we want to see with that money for the following fiscal year. So the current amendment proposed by Commissioner Ryan does put some more language in there about how to get to that point, and so that hopefully, the city and the county will be there next year for the following fiscal year's budget. But we could do that at any point in time each year that we reauthorize this agreement.
So short of a full amendment or explicit contractual language, when we send a quarterly payment to the county, do we have any rights to specify how those dollars are spent?
I think we have to rely on the contract we've already agreed to and reimburse them for the costs, as long as their costs were within the scope of the contract, which they generally are. And I'm happy to speak to more specifics about that, maybe off the record or with your staff.
Yeah, I think that, again, we create some space here. I think this is an area that we continue to fully evaluate. I, you know, I don't want to throw stuff into the amendment that's unnecessary, but I, we've documented a lot of out-of-pocket that the city is paying for directly when it comes to homelessness. And I, you know, personally would like some assurances that we have a mechanism to get that reimbursed as we go forward. Leave it at that.
Commissioner Maps?
Two things. First, Commissioner Gonzalez, I really appreciate that dialogue and that clarification. It helps, although I have to, I have to share with my colleagues on this council and the people who can hear my voice, I, I just do not understand why, how city dollars are allocated is something that we have to negotiate over, or should negotiate over. If the, if the county doesn't want to do whatever services that we're, we're trying to purchase, you know, that's fine. But I don't think that we would do this in any other space. I don't get this at all. And setting up a committee to, to figure out how much influence the city has also just doesn't make any sense for me. And it's kind of a nonstarter, although I guess the amendment maybe represents an improvement over the status quo. That's just sort of where I'm at. We can deal with the final vote next week. And I also, before I, before we vote on the proposed amendment, I also just do note that we have Dan Field here, the incoming head of the Joint Office, if not the current, I'm not sure if you're currently active, acting or not. I, I don't want to put you on the, on the spot, but if our colleague wanted to address counsel or had any thoughts, I'd certainly be interested in hearing whatever perspective that the head of the Joint Office brings. But it's your meeting, Mr. Mayor. I'll let you decide if that's a good idea, or Mr. Field decide if he has anything he wants to share today.
Yeah, well, I, I think that's up to Dan. Did you have anything you wanted to share? I generally don't make people testify.
We've been talking about subpoena power lately, so.
Never turned down a request to talk in public. I'm Dan Field.
Yeah, Mingus may regret this in a few days.
He may, yes.
Thank you.
I'm Dan Field, the, the brand-new director of the Joint Office, three weeks on the job. Appreciate the chance to be here. I thought it was important for me to be here and listen to the concerns expressed. I appreciate the dialogue with the City Attorney's Office to understand the nature of the agreement. So I don't have any specifics, other than to say, I think the amendment is absolutely framing the right discussion that council needs to have over the next week with the county. That discussion's already begun, as the mayor and Commissioner Ryan mentioned, with the chair. I have a lot of confidence, especially with the more controversial piece of the amendment regarding governance. I have confidence that we'll get there. I, I think having the conversation in and of itself is healthy. We need to understand what the joint decision-making and priority-setting process is in the Joint Office, if we're going to fulfill the promise of that. I do think, let's keep in mind why we created a Joint Office in the first place. There's a really complicated set of berated funding that needs to come together effectively to address the continuum of needs, from the, the city's priorities around temporary alternative shelter, to long-term rent support, shelter, and other strategies. So if we're going to fulfill the promise of a comprehensive strategic plan, we've got to do it together. And so I, I don't take lightly any indications from elected officials in whatever quarter who talk about stepping away from a joint strategy, because a joint strategy is the only thing that's going to get us there. So I know this is hard work. I know this is frustrating. I hear the frustration. I hear the concerns. And I think we've got to lean into them rather than back away from them. So that's my pledge, and that's my pitch. Short term, we got to do something in the next week to address the ideas that have been put on the table today. But more importantly, long term, we have to develop a joint strategy that we can all sign off on, so we're not having this conversation over and over and over every six months. And I think we'll get there.
Yeah, Dan, and if I may be so bold, partially, the timing is working against us here. We have a new chair. We have you as the new director of the Joint Office, but the IGA expires at the end of June. And so if, if we'd had an extra two months to work on this, I, I think we, we might have gotten farther than we have. But you, you said something that I agree with fundamentally. We now are very clear that the problem on our streets goes well beyond just the question of housing. We have significant behavioral health issues. We have significant substance use disorders. We have basic healthcare needs for those who are on our streets. And part of our strategy to off-ramp from people from the streets has to include those services. We do not provide those services. The county provides those services. The county not only has the infrastructure and the expertise to provide those services, they actually have connection to the federal and state streams of funding which support those services, an area you happen to be an expert in, given your background, more than me, I'll put it that way. But your, your experience with CCOs and those relationships puts you in good standing to help us navigate some of those issues. So from my perspective, while there is more I would like to see from a governance perspective, if this is joint, then truly, we have to make personnel decisions together, and we have to make budgeting decisions together. And I agree with you. I think we're moving rapidly in that direction, particularly given some of the chair's agreements to support the, the programs and the services that we are spearheading here at the city of Portland. But ultimately, we can't do it independently of the human services infrastructure at the county. That's just the bottom line. That is a fact. So we have to figure out how to work within the confines of the spaces where we, you know, work within the confines of our own spans of control. We have to partner. It's the prisoner's dilemma, right? Rit large.
Rit very large.
And so I, I would like us to continue to, and I hear my colleagues, I, I absolutely empathize, and I agree with, and I understand all of the concerns they are raising, but I do believe we're moving in the right direction. And I will reiterate again, I think you're exactly the right person for the job at the right time, and we're lucky to have you in the position you're in, because you know it's a tough one.
Well, I appreciate that. And I want to echo what you said, Mayor, about the chair. You're characterizing conversations you've had with her, and I think my experience observing her and talking with her is exactly the same. So she is committed to a partnership that fulfills the promise of the Joint Office. She's saying that to her team privately, as well as you privately, and she'll say it publicly. Where that lands us, in terms of a governance model, in terms of a precise financial contribution to the city piece of the strategy, that's for you and the chair and the rest of the council and the board to decide, but that's where we're headed. And so there's no question that our interests and our objectives are aligned, and of course, the political process is negotiating the details.
Okay, good. So colleagues, we have a lot of people waiting for an important proclamation. Are there any burning questions, or can we vote on the amendment? Let's call the roll.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. As a commissioner who oversaw the Joint Office with the county for more than two years, I understand the importance of this vote very well. I also think it's honest to say that Portlanders would agree that we are failing on our mission to reduce homelessness in our city, and most would say that we are not doing enough for mental and behavioral health and drug addiction. I had two primary focuses during my two-year tenure, and that was to build a culture rooted in data to improve the system, and to build an on-ramp program with, for chronic homelessness to stability. Today, we're moving forward to ensure that we build a data-driven culture with our partners at Human Solutions, Built for Zero. And I'm grateful that we also successfully have launched the SRV program. We have five open and two more to open this summer. And the good news is, we have data, and we have, over 50% of the participants have moved into stable housing after three to nine months of service. However, outside of the ARPA-funded SRV program, there was a little sense of collaboration at times and shared goals between the city and the county on addressing homelessness. Today, I support the extension of the contract only due to the new leadership of County Chair Jessica Vega-Petersen and Joint Office Director Dan Field. And we are so grateful to have you here today, Dan. I'm hopeful that the county will be thought partners with the city, the city needs, that all of us need, to deliver results that Portlanders expect. However, we cannot continue to fund an office that isn't delivering on the needs of our homeless community. Voters and taxpayers need to know where we are and where we're going, hence the data-driven dashboard. Providers need to align their work to move the needle and measure their progress. This commitment to accountability and transparency will improve the system. That's why I feel it's important that we amend the contract to include these tangible measurements, to hold the Joint Office and community accountable to these tangible solutions. I vote aye.
Gonzalez?
So I, I, again, I
So I, again, I want to appreciate my colleagues' work on this for the last 24 hours, the engagement of the county, leadership of the mayor, very nice to meet you, Mr. Field, look forward to a deeper discussion. I think we made progress over the last day. It's not exactly where I want it to be. I'm looking forward to space to continue to improve the relationship and clarify in the coming week or so, and want to create space that we don't necessarily have to do that in a, in front of the whole public. We can do some of that in private and then present out to the public what we resolve. But I want to make one last observation on the relationship between the city and county as the new guy here, and witnessing on a number of fronts, the interaction, interactions. I, you know, the City of Portland is in some ways uniquely positioned in its relationship with the county. We're nearly 80% of Multnomah County's population. We have substantial apparatus, substantial infrastructure, and for better or worse, we're held responsible by voters for many of the challenges that are faced on the streets of Portland, whether we are by statute responsible for those things. The city is who voters often look to, to solve the problems of livability. And I think as we define our relationship on the joint office, our relationship on public safety, our relationship on emergency management, all of these are things I touch in my day-to-day job as Commissioner of Public Safety. I think we have to frame it with that in mind, that the statutes that address county and city responsibilities, even some of the federal funding mechanisms that presume a large county in a relatively small city, don't fully reflect the reality of what goes on in the City of Portland and Multnomah County, just given our relative size to the county. And I just make that more of an observation. It's not a prescription. It's just five months on the job and watching these different intersections. It's somewhat unique in the state, in my opinion. It's not completely unique, but it's somewhat unique. Bottom line, I'm going to vote aye on this amendment, but I believe there's further work to be done and hopefully in collaboration and as adults to continue to flesh out this very complex relationship.
Maps.
I appreciate the dialogue we've had today, and I really appreciate Mr. Field addressing counsel, especially on the fly. I do hear some disagreement in this room, and I hear some consensus. I hear something which I think there's consensus on. It is past time, I think that we all agree, that the City of Portland and Multnomah County sign a contract that clearly articulates the parts of the houselessness crisis which are a city responsibility, the parts of this houselessness crisis which are a county responsibility, and the parts of this houselessness crisis which are a shared responsibility. Unfortunately, the contract we are being asked to renew today does not do that. Instead, our current arrangement with the county basically boils down to the city giving the county $40 million a year or so to support household services. The county decides how to spend it. The city has very little influence over how joint office dollars are spent. In fact, the City of Portland struggles to get basic financial and programmatic data out of the joint office. This arrangement is unacceptable. Of course, I do believe in the need for cooperation and coordination between the City of Portland and Multnomah County on houselessness services, and I look forward to one day voting in favor of a new contract for the joint office. Here are seven things that I think are important to be contained in that contract. You know, first, the city needs to have a proportional say in how joint office dollars are spent. Second, the joint office needs to end mandates that require shelters to be low barrier. Third, this IGA needs to require resources go to drug and alcohol treatment. Fourth, the joint office needs a new focus on residential drug and mental health treatment. Fifth, the joint office should forbid treatment, detox, sobering, and corrections providers from discharging clients without having a place for them to sleep. Sixth, the county should provide the city with timely access to joint office data. And finally, the county should provide the city with timely and accurate data on staffing, cost, scope of work, and assigned duties at the joint office. Frankly, until we see a contract that reflects these clarifications, I will be a no in this space. However, today, the amendments that have been put on the table move this discussion forward, so I'm going to vote in favor of these amendments. I hope that these discussions and this document and contract continue to evolve over the next week, because I sure hope that I can vote yes when it comes back to this council in seven days. For these reasons and more, I vote aye.
Rubio.
So I'll start by saying that I'm not hearing a lot that I disagree with, and so I'll add some of my comments from the dialogue into my closing comments now. But first, I want to acknowledge the amendment offered by Commissioner Ryan and its alignment with recent actions announced earlier this year by Chair Vega Peterson. I believe there is consensus among this council and, and, yes, our new leadership at the county on the need for data-driven decisions to track progress, increasing accountability, and greater transparency, everything that we've talked about. And that was the exact premise behind Chair Vega Peterson's February announcement regarding the new data task force. And I also am in alignment with my colleagues about wanting greater collaboration and partnership with the, on the city's temporary alternative shelter sites with on-service, on-site services, because, you know, to be frank, there was no plan to provide houses to community members with urgent interim housing options with services, and the city came up with one. And next, we set out to find partners who know how to do this work with dignity, and we found that partner in Urban Alchemy, a city-led effort, and have seen their work in action, and I feel hopeful for that work. We also found a partner in the governor, and I hope that Multnomah County Board of Commissioners will join us in that. And I'm very grateful and appreciative of Chair Vega Peterson's recent partnership to support the city's task work on this front. I do agree, the underspending of the $25 million in additional revenues is far from acceptable, but we do have a plan, as we heard from the mayor, and our plan is the only plan of its kind, and with the full force of support of every elected body in this region and our state, we can be successful in finally building a fuller continuum of support for many different individual needs and provide a pathway away from the houseless crisis and over time to housing for everyone who needs it. I also want to add, because everyone is talking, adding this as well, that I plan to vote yes on the extension next week, because it's a one-year extension with opportunity to check in about the contract at six months, and also because I believe we do need the partnership with the county. We need better systems and investments and collaboration, and Portlanders are counting on that from us. The past may have gotten us here, but we do comprise a new constellation of leadership at every level and at every entity, and we're actively changing the past trajectory to one that is working. So, and I'm hopeful for that work. And we have, you know, a time, a terminal band around this time for us to check in about that work. So I'm grateful to Dan Field for your comments today, for being here, for your leadership, which I also think will be instrumental and pivotal in this discussion. So I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I think we all want the Joint Office of Homeless Services to live up to its name, and I think there's broad agreement that this council would like to see full partnership around budgeting, full partnership around human resource decisions, and the identification and funding of policy priorities. Where I think the value in the joint office also resides is around leverage. We have the opportunity to leverage what each of our governments is good at. The city is responsible for infrastructure, for public right-of-way management, for safety in our community, and other services. By design, the county government is responsible for human services. And what's shifted in our job is that the problems we are seeing at the street level are very much human service-oriented problems, and therefore, we have to pivot in the way that we deliver services to be effective on behalf of our mutual constituents, the city and the county's mutual constituents. We don't control the streams of funding. The SHS dollars go through the county. Therefore, we have to negotiate with the county to access those dollars. We had to negotiate with the governor on dollars that were also being allocated towards county government to address homelessness, and she has supported us. The governor has heard us, and the governor has thrown in in a significant way to support our efforts around the temporary alternative shelter sites. I also just want to underscore that the chair has heard our arguments around providing behavioral health services, around providing substance use disorder treatment services, around navigating people from the temporary alternative shelter sites into housing that would be specifically reserved for that population, so that we can maximize the flow-through of people in those sites and free up spots for other people who desperately need case management and navigation to services and ultimately success in housing. We're making progress. And then in addition, just in the last few days, the chair has stepped forward and committed some of the unanticipated revenue collection towards this purpose. So I see us moving in the right direction. Do we have everything we want today? No, we do not. But this is a classic case where I don't think we should let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And again, I hear from the public loudly and clearly that unless this relationship is truly lost, keep at it. Work together, because you've got the human services piece, and you've got the safety and infrastructure piece, and we are absolutely better together. We're stronger if we can leverage off of each other. That is my aspiration. Are we exactly where I want us to be today? No, of course not. But I see that we're moving in the right direction, and I want to give Dan a chance as well. I have a lot of respect for Dan, and we're putting a lot of hope in one individual and the staff that he's in the process of assembling, in the most complex space in which we all deal. And I want to give you the opportunity to also deliver. You've heard our concerns. You bothered to come here today, and you knew that you were going to hear some frustration leveled towards this relationship, and a lot of that predates you, obviously. A lot of it predates the current chair, in her current role. So that's where I am today. Dan, I appreciate, Commissioner Ryan, I appreciate you bringing forward the amendment. I think there is broad agreement that more transparency and accountability is a must-have, and while I understand it's still slightly evolving, what I've seen and what I understand of the amendment is something I can absolutely support. So I vote aye, and the amendment is now adopted. This is a first reading of an on-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading as amended. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you for your patience. This may be the most important thing we talk about today, so I appreciate those of you who have waited now over an hour patiently. Item number 412, please, Keala.
Proclaim May 30th, 2023 to be Vamport Day of Remembrance.
Colleagues, today we remember and bring attention to the horrific and deadly Vamport flood as we proclaim May 30th, 2023, as Vamport Remembrance Day in the City of Portland. I'd like to welcome Laura LaForte, Vamport Mosaic co-founder, to begin this morning's presentation and introduce our esteemed guests. Good morning. Thank you for your patience.
Good morning. I will just take a couple of minutes, because I really want all the time to be dedicated to the survivors. I thank you for this opportunity. I do want to acknowledge those who left. We had Obi Hill, who is a community historian, survivor, and civic leader, and a treasure. So, and his daughter Angela, they were here. So I just want to mention so that they are in our space, and I want to thank all the survivors who are here with us. I'll invite you to the Vamport Mosaic Festival, which is happening as we speak. It will run until May 29th with tours, screenings, and other opportunities to learn about this history and to honor the survivors who continue to contribute to our region. And with that said, I will invite here Ms. Jenny Sokamoto, Doug Honda, and Mr. Ed Washington.
Great. Thank you for being here. Thanks for honoring us with your presence. Any order you'd prefer? Would you like to go first, or?
Good day. I'm Jana Sokamoto, a Vamport survivor. 2023 marks the 75th anniversary of the devastating flood that destroyed Vamport, the second Oregon housing project during World War II. Our family came to Vamport for housing. About 900 Japanese-Americans could not find a place to live after we were internment at Minidoka. We had to find a place to live, and Portland was still prejudiced, and we had no place. So we were told that Vamport was available for housing, and so that's where we were there. And our family was there till we were displaced again because of the flood. But the history and the legacy of Vamport remains for many generations, and it's a reminder that a history of Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Good morning, commissioners and Mayor Wheeler. Proud to be here today, and wanted to introduce myself as Doug Honda, spelled with an A, not an O, Japanese pronunciation. And I'd like to share my family's connection to the Vamport community. I'm referred to as Sanse, which is American-born, third-generation Japanese-American. And my grandmother, Izumi Oyama, was one of the 15 victims who perished in the Vamport flood. My grandparents are Iwau and Izumi Oyama, and their story began when they immigrated from Japan to the United States in 1920. Like many immigrants, they were seeking a better life. They made a modest living, publishing a small Portland newspaper that served the local Japanese community. Their life was very difficult, as you can imagine, yet they worked very hard and were driven by the optimism that the future would bring great opportunities for their children and the next generation. That all came to an abrupt halt with Japan bombing Pearl Harbor and the US entering World War II. My family was forced into wartime internment or concentration camps following President Franklin Roosevelt's signing of Executive Order 9066. At that time, as you can imagine, there was a lot of wartime hysteria, and they unfortunately looked like the enemy. So they suffered, living in a desolate Idaho prison camp called Minidoka, for the duration of the war, with their children, Albert and Minnie. Minnie was my mother. And when the war ended, they returned to Portland, both broke and unwelcome by the community. Fortunately, they discovered that Vamport was one of the few areas of Portland where people from all walks of life could live and be accepted. They restarted their Japanese newspaper, and their future began to look bright again. But once again, tragedy struck on May 30th, 1948, when my grandmother Izumi, who was home alone that day, drowned in the Vamport flood. My mother told me her body wasn't found for many days afterwards. She was 47 years old at that time. So fast forward to today, and my family and I are so pleased to see the preservation and the sharing of the many important stories of the Vamport survivors and their descendants. So I'd like to thank you for supporting the Vamport Day of Remembrance.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, and all of the council members, guests. I'd just like to add a little bit to the story of the Japanese. When I was living in Vamport, I was seven years old when I moved there, and it was during the war. And not having had geography and all of those things, I knew that we were, the country was at war with Japan, and I thought all Japanese were in Japan. I never knew that there were any Japanese in Vamport until, you know, fast forward to the 1946. I remember a teacher in our classroom said to us one day, she said, "Boys and girls, I just want you all to know that Japanese students are returning to school." But I don't remember her telling me where they had been, and I knew about your mother as one of the victims of the flood. I appreciate this proclamation because a proclamation about Vamport is, so many times people have so many misunderstandings about Vamport. A lot of people, when I was growing up, they, if you talk about Vamport, they say, "Oh, yeah, it was that, it was that all-black city, and it was rundown, and it was a slum." And none of those things were true. None of those things were true about Vamport. Vamport was far, far more than that, and that's why I'm so thankful that we all have the opportunity to work with the Vamport Mosaic Project and to keep Vamport alive. And I just want to close by listening to all the things that you all are dealing with in terms of housing. It just made me think about how we dealt with housing after the Vamport flood. Because when we moved here in 1944, the only place that my family could live was in Vamport. There was no other options for us, and that's where we lived. But, you know, on the day of the flood, I was thinking about my mother, once we got out, we spent two nights at Oakley Green Grade School the day of the flood, and it was really quite an experience for, I think, all the kids because there's all this stuff. Whenever there's an emergency, you get all these things. You get food, you get clothes, you get all this stuff. And then that Monday morning, because we spent that Sunday night there, I remember a man getting on the stage, and he said, he said, "There's a church on northeast Russell and Rodney that will take some colored families." And we knew exactly what that meant. We had to leave Oakley Green School, and we spent about three weeks at this small Lutheran church. It's gone now, over on northeast Rodney and Russell. But my mom remained friends of the pastor of that church for probably the, until they passed away, and they had moved back to Minnesota. After the church, my family moved, we spent the summer down on Swan Island, where there were barracks for the shipyard workers, but those barracks had been cleaned up and restored, and we spent the summer there. And we left Swan Island in the summer, the fall of 1950, and moved to Gows Lake, where we spent that horrible winter of 1948 and 49. And I'm telling you, it was horrible. It was cold, it was snow, it was icy, it was bad, and we lived in two trailers. My mother and sister had one trailer, and my older brothers and I had another. Then from there, we was able to find an apartment on North Interstate, and from North Interstate, we went back to Swan Island, where they had taken the barracks and really made very, very nice apartments out of them. And then from Swan Island, my parents were able to find a house over on northeast Cook Street, just right on the other side of the Red Line, in case anybody don't know what that is. Because it was only within that district where black people could live. And then, so, you know, that, so here we are, 75 years later. We're still struggling with it, so I just wish you all the best. But thank you so much for remembering this important place, not only to the Vamport survivors, but really to the entire city and state, because Vamport was the second-largest city in the state of Oregon, population-wise. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, all three of you. We appreciate it. Commissioner Maps.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me begin by thanking Janice, Ed, and Doug for their testimony today. And colleagues, Mr. Mayor, it's my honor to join you in declaring May 30th, 2023 to be Vamport Day of Remembrance. It is important that we remember Vamport because that lost city still has things to teach us. As we have heard today, in the 1940s, Vamport was the second-largest city in Oregon. And in 1948, Vamport was wiped out by a flood of biblical proportions. Today, Delta Park and the Portland International Raceway occupy the land where Vamport once stood. Vamport, as we have heard, was a remarkable city. The name Vamport is a mashup of the words Vancouver and Portland. And as we have heard today, Vamport was founded in the 1940s to house workers at the wartime Kaiser shipyards. In the 1940s, about 40,000 people lived in Vamport. A poll from that decade asked families why they chose to move to Vamport, and the top reason that they, the top reason was they thought it was their duty to go into defense work. It is also important to remember that about 40% of the residents of Vamport were Black. Now, here's how that has happened. The wartime defense industry jobs in Vamport triggered a great migration of African-Americans into Oregon. In terms of African-Americans, it is entirely possible that Vamport was the most racially-integrated city Oregon has ever seen. Now, all of that came to an end at 4:05 PM, May 30th, 1948, when a 200-foot-long section of a railroad berm holding back the Columbia River collapsed, triggering a flood, a tragic flood, as we have learned today. By nighttime, Vancouver, or Vamport, was underwater, and 17,500 Van Portlanders were homeless. That flood drove many African-Americans who lived in Vamport to Portland. This flood of Black refugees into Portland is the beginning, I would argue, of the modern era of Black politics here in Portland. 1948, in other words, is the moment when Portland began to really grapple with the cultural change needed to recognize Black people not only as full citizens of the state of Oregon. The flood of 1948 is also the moment when white Portlanders began to grapple with the cultural change that is needed to accept Black Portlanders as neighbors. Now, as Mr. Washington pointed out to us today, 75 years after the Vamport flood, this council and the city continue to struggle with making the cultural change needed to build a more equitable and inclusive Portland. Recommitting ourselves to engaging in that work is one of the ways Portlanders can participate in Vamport Remembrance Day. And there is another way Portlanders can participate in Vamport's Day of Remembrance, and that is to engage in some of the events associated with the Vamport Mosaic Festival. This year marks the eighth annual Vamport Mosaic Festival. The purpose of this festival is to honor and celebrate Vamport. This year, more than two dozen Vamport Mosaic events will be held throughout the city between May 18th and May 29th. Events include everything from art exhibits to musical performances to educational lectures to a self-guided walking tour. If you are interested in participating in Vamport Mosaic Festival, and I encourage you to do that, just point your browser to vamportmosaic.org, and you can find a schedule of events. Thank you very much again to our panelists, and, Mr. Mayor, I'll hand the floor back to you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to speak from the heart for a minute and just tell you how much I value you coming here today and sharing your personal stories. I mean, they were very compelling, and this does come up once, you know, once a year, but it's very, very important. It keeps the story alive, and it reminds us that we did have that here, and that set the, you know, it set some deep roots in this city that, you know, even though, you know, we struggle with economic justice and racial justice and a lot of these, these things in our system, we do have that capacity here because it existed, and it's a reminder of how we need to keep that spirit alive. And also, just want to really appreciate the elder voices coming and sharing directly. We're very lucky, and we're very honored that we get to hear those stories very directly from you and also from the legacy family members as well. So also very proud that we live in a community where we do have these celebrations to honor this community, but the stories are important, and keeping it present in front of us is very important, and especially for the next generation. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, Commissioner Ryan, then Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yeah. Good morning. Similar to Commissioner Rubio, I just want to thank you for being here. The, it's Janice, Doug, and Ed, all of you told such great stories. Hearing about your grandmother, you could really feel it coming out of your heart, and knowing your mother didn't have a mom for much of her life was compelling. And I feel like I've known you since, well, maybe since I was seven years old, and so that hearing, but I heard some new information from you. And I remember when we were at Portland State and you brought the Vamport Classic, you've told a lot of stories, but hearing the story, maybe for me, it sounded like the first time about that church on, was it Rodney and Russell? That was so compelling, so thank you for sharing that story. I really appreciate how you've single-handedly been a through line in my 30 years since I've been back in Portland of uplifting the Vamport story. I know my parents would always talk about it around Memorial Day because they lived near there, in St. John's, and they would tell me the story of the Henry Kaiser, that there weren't enough workers, and they had to find workers, and that was hence the big migration. And since I've been on this council, and I know that Commissioner Maps goes to meetings on this point, I often think, well, is that levee okay? I mean, does that happen? And we're now experiencing the traditional annual snowmelt, and I think we all, if you look out, the rivers are rising right now. So it makes sense that it, of course, happened during Memorial Weekend. And there've been, our 27-mile levee system protects 13,000 acres, 8 billion of property, and more than 1,000 sites containing hazardous materials. So as we talk about our infrastructure crisis and challenge, I hope we also use the Vamport memory that's still alive and with such heartfelt stories to remember that we must continue to take care of that asset. A 2019 levee study by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers found that the river could rise to more than 37 feet. Vamport was 31.6 feet, and major repairs totaling at least $130 million are set for 2025 to help mitigate potential flood damage from this old and aging infrastructure. So as long as I'm elected official, we'll work together to make sure that that investment happens by 2025, so we don't have to experience such hardship again. Anyway, thanks again for sharing your personal stories. That's what mattered the most. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Gonzalez.
I just want to say first and foremost, thank you for coming and keeping history alive, sharing your stories, passing it on to the next generation. I learned a lot today. I thought I knew the Vamport story. There's a lot I didn't know. And I would often have a grandfather talk about the risk of floods in the city of Portland, and just to echo some of Commissioner Ryan's points about the importance of those levees didn't help us on that day in Vamport, but hopefully we learned the lessons a little bit on infrastructure. With respect to race, however, the story of Vamport really takes us back to a dark time in our history that still has scars in the city of Portland. And tens of thousands of Black and Japanese-American men and women decided to make Portland their home, or at least make Vamport their home, and contributes to our, you know, with respect to the Black population, many working class that migrated during that time to support the nation's efforts in World War II by working in the shipyards. And the Japanese story, obviously, is, the Japanese-American story is often forgotten in the Vamport story, and just want to fully acknowledge that. But despite facing some painful challenges, when the war ended, many decided to either make Vamport home for a first time or stay there and continue to build a community there, to continue to make Oregon home. The blood, the flood did have a disproportionate impact on our working class, on our Japanese and Black American, and Portlanders, and it is sadly just one historic example of extreme weather events having disproportionate, disproportionate impact on our most marginalized communities, our working-class communities. We don't have to look that far back in history to find other examples. In 2021, we experienced the Heat Dome event that had disproportionate impact on our working-class neighborhoods in East Portland. So these scars continue to push forward when we deal with very difficult weather events. And it's important for us as elected representatives to remember those painful events, to protect our community against future ones, and learn some hard lessons from them. And of course, to remember those Portlanders who faced loss of their lives, livelihoods, and beloved family members. Thank you for allowing us to remember and honor those folks today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. I'll just say this, because I'm going to read a proclamation too, and I know everybody's been waiting. I can't thank you enough. And what I always take away from these presentations is that this is a story that's deeply personal. It's sad, and it's tragic. It underscores a very dark moment in our city's history. But it is also a story of resilience, and there's a positive side to this story, and your being here and your sharing your stories, and you are reminding us of the resilience of the people who were impacted and whose families were impacted, and your current role in our society today, the important role you play, not only in your day-to-day lives as citizens, but also, as my colleagues have indicated, as that thread that goes back through our history and reconnects us with how we got to where we are today, is extremely powerful to me. And I know it's probably personally challenging to come here year after year and retell stories that are often traumatic at their heart, but I also think how important this is. And if I could go back and re-script today, I think the only thing I would have done differently is I wish we had started with this presentation with the children who were here earlier. I wish they could have heard this presentation because it's powerful, and I think it would speak to them today, even if they aren't aware of what happened at Vamport. To hear it from you and to see that resilience over 75 years, I think, would have been very inspiring to them. And so, Laura, I don't know where Laura disappeared to. There's Laura over here in the wings. Laura, the Mosaic Project, I think, is so critically important for just this reason, and I really appreciate you bringing that history to the present because it really does help us understand a lot about our community today. And so, thank you for that. It's my honor now to read on behalf of the City Council a proclamation that honors and Whereas our understanding of history shapes our view of the present and understand where we are going, we must understand where we're from. And whereas 2023 is the 75th anniversary of the flood that erased Vamport in a matter of hours, and whereas Vamport was once the country's largest public housing project and Oregon's second-largest city with a peak population of 42,500 people, and whereas Vamport was intended as temporary housing for the war workers pouring into Portland from all over the country, supplying labor to three major shipbuilding yards, and whereas Vamport was demographically diverse with African-American, Japanese- Vanport was demographically diverse with African-American, Japanese-American, Hispanic, Native American, Asian, and white populations who all came from elsewhere to work here in our shipyards in Portland. And whereas a post-war housing shortage affected all incoming laborers, but due to Portland's discriminatory housing policies at the time, such as redlining, many of the African-American workers could find no place to live because they were restricted to a small area of Portland that was already at capacity. And whereas Vanport was a city of many firsts in Oregon, including being the first to hire African-American police officers and teachers, and whereas after the war, the city was also home to many Japanese-Americans who had few living options when released from American concentration camps during World War II. And whereas these groups of people found themselves all strangers together and forged new connections that endured even after Vanport was gone. And whereas Vanport was constructed in the Columbia River floodplain and was protected from the river by a series of levees, and whereas exceptionally heavy snowfall in the winter of 1947, 1948, and the cold springs that followed, combined with the sudden warm-up and rains of May to decimate the snowpack and swell the Columbia River. And whereas although the river levels rose to alarming height over a period of weeks, the Housing Authority of Portland assured by the Army Corps of Engineers that the dykes were both strong and high enough to protect Vanport from the expected peak water levels, did not order residents to evacuate. And whereas the Housing Authority of Portland did, however, after an emergency meeting on the evening of May 29, 1948, provide a notice on some of the residents' doorsteps, telling them that they were safe at the present time, that they would have plenty of time to evacuate if there were flooding, and they should not, quote, "get excited," unquote. Whereas at 4:17 PM the very next day, Sunday, May 30, the Housing Authority of Portland and the Army Corps of Engineers were proven wrong when a 600-foot section of the railroad berm to the west of the city failed and water began to pour into Vanport. And whereas the flood wiped out the city in a matter of hours. Whereas at least 15 people died in the Vanport flood, and 18,700 residents, about 6,300 of them African-American, lost their homes and most of their belongings. And whereas Vanport Mosaic will hold the 8th Vanport Mosaic Festival from May 18 to 29 to honor and celebrate Vanport as an essential and sometimes forgotten chapter in Portland's history, a story that provides a template for how we can all live together and create a society that honors history, cultural contributions, and paves the way for our humanity and our city to thrive. Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim May 30, 2023 to be Vanport Day of Remembrance in Portland and encourage all residents to observe this day. Let us remember and honor the lives affected by the Vanport flood, learn from their experiences, and strive to create a more inclusive and resilient city for all. Thank you. We so appreciate you being here today. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Laura, wherever you went, thank you. There you are, hiding again. Thank you. We so appreciate you. Thanks. Colleagues, do you mind if we take a five-minute break?
No.
Thanks. I'm getting old and I need it.
413, please.
Appoint Joseph Torres Ortiz to the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing.
This is a report, colleagues. Here with us today are Samir Kanal and Dory Grabinski of the Community Safety Division to introduce this item. Welcome and thanks for your patience today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for having us. For the record, my name is Dory Grabinski, and I'm the Project Manager of the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing, also known as PCEP. We are housed in the Advisory Boards and Commissions Unit in the Community Safety Division. As you know, PCEP is a mayoral committee tasked with independently assessing how the city is progressing with the remedies in the United States versus City of Portland Settlement Agreement. PCEP also offers community members a chance to give input on a broad range of issues related to policing in Portland and makes recommendations to the mayor and chief of police. PCEP has a total of 13 seats, two of which are reserved for youth members. At present, our membership sits at 11 with the two youth seats vacant. We are here today to request the appointment of a youth member to fill one of those vacancies. I will now pass it to PCEP co-chair, Pastor Robin Wisner, who has some additional comments about the committee's work and this appointment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Pastor Robin Wisner, and I am one of the PCEP co-chairs. Since the summer of 2022, PCEP staff and members have been working hard to bring community back into compliance and, just as importantly, provide an exclusive space for community engagement about policing in our city. We have made tremendous progress and are very proud of the work that we have done. Our plan for this summer and beyond, including having more in-person and hybrid community engagement events, so we can truly diversify our group of Portlanders. We also have a plan of engaging more with the Portland Police Bureau Policy Review Process. This is always more work. There is always more work to do, but today we hope that we have taken the right step directly by adding a youth member to our community, our committee. The perspective of our young generation is vital in advancing the goals of the settlement agreement, and we are excited to welcome Mr. Torres. And I'll pass it back to Dory.
Great. So our candidate for PCEP appointment is also here with us today. Joseph Torres Ortiz is a leader in the community who plans to become a social studies educator. As a PCEP member, Joseph looks forward to learning more about the process around the settlement agreement and empowering others in the community to learn alongside him. So I will now invite Joseph to introduce himself.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Torres Ortiz. I'm a Portland native that is currently pursuing my master's in education at Portland State University with the goal of teaching social studies. I'm passionate about social change and empowering my community. I currently work for a nonprofit in Portland that serves youth and families. As a leader, I'm dedicated to promoting equity and creating a more just society. And with that being said, I joined PCEP to gain a better understanding of how our police engages with Portland's most underprivileged citizens. Overall, I want PPV to be more equitable, responsible, and fair to everyone. Thank you. I'm really happy to be here.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Colleagues, any questions? And just for the record, we don't have testimony in this, do we?
We do. We have one person signed up.
Okay, I have a couple of comments, but why don't we hear public testimony first?
First, we have, or first and only, we have Mark Porres.
Very good. Mark, welcome.
Yep, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mark Porres. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm with the group Portland Cop Watch. When you appointed two new members to PCEP, the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing, on February 15th, we said we had no problem with the appointments, and we noted that there were still two open seats. We also have no problem with Joseph Torres Ortiz's appointment today. However, we're concerned that since he's a graduate student and PCEP's youth seats are restricted to people aged 16 through 24, that his tenure as a youth member will not last very long. We're also concerned that even with this appointment, there's still one empty seat to fill on PCEP, which brings us back to the issue that we've raised continuously, which is that PCEP and other city bodies should set their quorum to a majority of seated members. So for instance, while PCEP has only had 11 members these last several months, their quorum should have been six members instead of seven. Leaving the quorum the way it's defined by the number of total seats has not made city council fill the empty seats any faster. It's only hampered PCEP's ability to do its work. And we also note that the compliance officer has reported repeatedly about how PCEP has had a full contingent of 13 members since last fall, though the two previously appointed youth members attended few, if any, meetings, another person's term expired, and other people have resigned. PCEP used to have a pool of alternates who could step up if seats opened up, and perhaps it's time to revive that practice. Thank you. That's all of that.
Yeah, thanks, Mark, and I'll just respond to what you've said. Personally, I would not support a quorum with no minimum. At some point, you run the risk, obviously, of having a very few number of people making decisions on behalf of what's supposed to be a larger and more comprehensive advisory body. But I don't know. I mean, I'm certainly open to the idea of changing the quorum rules, but with a floor, that it must include at least a certain number of people. You can toy with that, talk amongst your friends and colleagues, and see if there's a there or there, but I'm not opposed to that, just, FYI. And with regard to the shortness of tenure as youth, all of us had short tenures as youth. I don't even remember mine for the most part, but I applaud you, Mr. Ortiz, for stepping up and being willing to do this. And by the way, I'm really interested that you want to be an educator, and in particular, in social studies. We have one historian here on our city council, and I'm just curious, what motivated you to want to be an educator? That's a tough job.
I come from a family of educators. I have two family members that are, well, one of them moved, but my uncle Esteban Ortiz is an educator at McDaniel High School. He's one of my biggest role models, and one of the reasons why I want to be an educator. I'm also, I want to be a role model in my community. I just, I want to be that inspiration for youth. And social studies is pretty broad. It's not just about history, but there's a lot of things that go into social studies. And yeah, I just have a passion to just be that person and inspire change.
Great. Well, first of all, let me just enthusiastically say I appreciate you, and I appreciate your perspective. You have a spark about you, and I like that. Your experience is very good for what we're looking at. I appreciate your willingness to step up and serve. As you know, the pay's lousy, the hours are long, but other than that, it's a great gig if you can get it. But the truth is, as Mark indicated, this is a really important body, and the work can be intense at times. And I think the perspective you bring is a unique one and a really important one, so I'm glad you're willing to step forward. Colleagues, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Commissioner Maps moves. Any second?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan seconds. See approval of the report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Good to see you, Pastor Wisner, and thank you, Joseph, for offering to serve your services needed and wanted. And like the mayor said, just knowing your passion for teaching was inspiring. Your insights into this complicated work are so needed and wanted. Thanks. Aye.
Gonzalez.
Muchas gracias, Joseph, and thank you so much for your willingness to serve. I vote aye.
Maps.
Joseph, thank you for agreeing to serve on this important committee. I vote aye.
Rubio.
I want to thank all of you for being here, and of course, Pastor Wisner, it's always great to see you. Wonderful to see you and hear your words and comments about the great work of PCEP, and thanks to all of your service to the community. Joseph, I'm very excited for you to join, not only because of your perspective about, you know, education, but also, and youth, but also because you're a young leader in the Latina community, and that's really important for our community right now. So we need your voice, and I'm really grateful that you're serving. I vote aye.
Wheeler. Well, thank you, Mr. Ortiz. We appreciate it, and thank you for bringing us a really solid candidate. I'm excited about what you can bring to the discussion. Thank you. I vote aye, and the report is approved, and the appointment's approved as well. Thank you, and best of luck to you.
May I say this?
Yes, of course.
On the proclamation that you did for Vanport Remembrance Day, I was very moved and very, very, very satisfied with the historical bringing it out, as well as being able to have that a day of remembrance here in the city. Thank you guys so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please, is item 414. It's an emergency ordinance.
Approve grant renewal funding recommendations by Portland Children's Levy Allocation Committee for July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. I'll start by thanking Portland voters for supporting the fourth renewal of the Portland Children's Levy, which passed last week by 70%. I'm heartened to see investments in our children chosen once again and again, especially in the wake of a pandemic that fell so heavily on children and youth education. The Levy is seeking council approval on renewal grants recommended by the Levy's Allocation Committee, which I sit on with four other esteemed colleagues, including Chair Vega Peterson. These grants will continue early childhood abuse prevention, foster care after school programming, mentoring hunger relief services for the next two years. Lisa Pellegrino, Levy Director, and Joel Broussard, Grant Manager, are here, and also you, John. But that wasn't in my notes, so it's wonderful to have here as well. Take it away, Lisa.
Thanks, Commissioner Ryan. Good afternoon, everybody. As Commissioner Ryan said, we are here requesting approval of the Allocation Committee's recommendations for grant renewals. And to remind you all of the committee, if you can have the first slide, that'd be great. The first slide just shows the members of the committee that made these decisions that are before you, Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Jessica Vega Peterson, as he mentioned, and also Tracy Rossi, who is the city-appointed citizen member of the Allocation Committee, and Felicia Tripp Folsom, who is the county-appointed citizen member of the committee. There's too many Cs there. Mitch Hornaker, who is the representative of the business community. So that's the committee that made these decisions that are before you today. If you can go to the next slide, please. The levy funding cycle, just to review, because not everybody has been on the council since we were before you with these recommendations. After the voters approve a levy, PCL runs a competitive grant round and makes three-year initial grants with an opportunity for renewal that's based on performance. We give these multi-year grants based on very consistent feedback that emphasizes the need for stabilizing funding that's providing really key services for community, and also helps organizations leverage additional funding when they have that stable funding. So that's sort of the process that we go through. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to briefly review our process that we're, that you all, that, I'm sorry, start again. The grants recommended today for renewal were initially funded in 1920, competitive grant round for large grants, and I was just going to briefly review that process that we went through to make the initial grants that these are now extensions of. So the first step in that process is to prepare a local data report where we summarize what's going on with children and families in our community, and we use that to frame the funding application and to outline what the current conditions that children and families are facing in the community. Next, we do about a year-long community engagement process to understand what community needs and priorities are for funding. Last time, we worked with Empress Rules Equity Consulting to design and implement that process. They surveyed community members and also service providers and conducted focus groups to try to understand what the most pressing needs were and what kind of programming PCL should be funding. The other thing we did last time was to engage PSU's Center for Improvement on Children and Family Services to review our grant-making process and make recommendations for improvement. Those recommendations focused on improving equity and transparency throughout the process, and we redesigned our funding application to focus on the equity, diversity, and inclusion practices of applicants. So that's kind of the pre-process that we go through. Next slide, please. And then we issue the funding applications in the six program areas that Commissioner Ryan referenced in his remarks. We work with, we recruit community reviewers to review the funding applications. Four to five reviewers score each application, and then the Allocation Committee considers the scores for the applications, the staff funding recommendations, and the applicant testimony to make their final decisions. The Allocation Committee made the funding recommendations that were approved by city council for these grants that are now before you in May 2020, and now that we are here for performance-based renewals for two years. I'm going to turn it over to Joel Broussard, who's on my far right, to talk you through the process that we use to consider renewals that are here today.
Thank you, Lisa. Good afternoon, everyone. So we're going to talk, I'm going to talk about the grant renewal process. All current grantees were eligible to receive a two-year renewal grant. Renewal grants are made to allow grantee partners to continue delivering the same or substantial similar services to the community. At the February AC meeting, staff presented the renewal grant funding formula, which took into account projected resources in the January revenue forecast and higher-than-average inflation rates at that time. The base used for calculating the grant renewal amount is 40% of the three-year grant award plus a 4% compounded COLA on the base amount. Where grantees were not able to return to pre-pandemic service levels, staff may recommend reduced funding. After the February meeting, staff communicated the renewal process and funding formula to grantees. Next slide, please. In February and March, staff reviewed grantees' mid-year progress reports and saw positive trends overall, one of which, 83% of grantees were on track at that time to meet goals for the number of people served. Two, 78% of grantees were on track to meet at least half of service activity delivery goals that they had. And third, grant spending was much closer to pre-pandemic rates. One particular challenge, which was consistent throughout the pandemic and continues to remain so, is 64% of the grantees reported ongoing staffing challenges. Next slide, please. In March and April of '23, we met with grantees to discuss results and any performance concerns. We developed and sent renewal recommendations to those grantees by the end of March, on March 31st. Grantees had the option to send written response to staff recommendations, and then staff recommendations and grantee written responses were sent to the Allocation Committee at the beginning of April. Next slide, please. After reviewing staff recommendations and grantee responses, the Allocation Committee has recommended 76 of the 80 large grants for renewal at the full formula. Reduced funding for three of the grants where programs have not been able to return to pre-pandemic service levels entrance were not positive that they could. And then one grant declined renewal due to ongoing staffing shortages in the childcare and preschool sector. That concludes our presentation. Any questions from the council on the Allocation Committee recommendations?
Colleagues, any questions? All right, very good. And does that complete your testimony?
That does. John was just here in case there happened to be any money questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it, all three of you. Do we have public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
All right, very good. This is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Brian.
Yeah, thanks for being a North Star on how we work with community when it comes to our granting from the city. I really appreciate it, and I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Appreciate your stewardship. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Thank you for all your work and your dedication to Portland families and children. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Well-oiled machine, as per usual. Thank you. I vote aye, and the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Appreciate your continued leadership. Item 415, this is a second reading.
And thanks for your patience.
Authorize competitive solicitation and contract with the lowest responsible bidder for construction of the Mount Scott Community Center seismic retrofit and expansion project for an estimated cost of $28 million, 300,000.
Colleagues, this is the second reading. We've already heard a presentation and had opportunity for public testimony. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Brian.
Robin, thank you for your leadership, and a lot of appreciation for the work being done by Adam McGowan, the Mount Scott's director. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Thank you, Robin. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. 416, also a second reading.
Authorize eight grant or intergovernmental agreements related to the community watershed stewardship program for a total amount up to $100,000.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Brian.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
I didn't know much about this project. I thought it was really interesting and very worthwhile. Thanks, Commissioner Maps. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. 417, a second reading.
Authorize intergovernmental agreement with Montlemme County Health Department for $129,000 to conduct lead-related public health services for the Lead Hazard Reduction Program.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Brian.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. 418, this is a non-emergency ordinance.
Admonmit permit fee schedules for building cannabis, electrical, enforcement, land use services, mechanical, noise, plumbing, signs, site development, and land use services fee schedule for the hearing's office.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you. Today, we have before us the proposed fee changes for the Bureau of Development Services. BDS is responsible for administering and enforcing the state building code, as well as administering and enforcing the city zoning code, Title 33, and regulations on floating structures, Title 28, erosion control, Title 10, signs, Title 32, murals, Title 4, property maintenance, Title 29, portions of the tree code, Title 11, noise control, Title 18, liquor licensing, Chapter 14B 120, and marijuana licensing, Chapter 14B 130. 98% of BDS's ongoing funds come from permit fees and charges for service. Fees need to be set at a rate to cover the cost of providing these services. BDS revenues and reserve levels have declined in the past year, while costs continue to rise due to the inflationary economic environment. The rising costs of providing services are due to increases in personnel costs from cost of living adjustments, merit and step pay increases, mandatory purse contribution increases, costs associated with implementing crucial technology needed to provide online services and capacity to dedicate time to process improvement projects, as well as inflation and costs of materials and services. Fees from BDS programs administering the state building code are regulated by state law, which prohibit revenues from one program being used to fund another, other local programs, such as administration of the zoning code, sign code, and tree code. The ability for BDS to provide timely, predictable services is essential in keeping the construction industry working, adding to the housing supply, supporting business development, and attracting investment in Portland. The fee changes proposed today are necessary to maintain stability, implement important process and technology improvement work to deliver online services, and to shorten permitting timelines and keep up with the cost of inflation. These fee changes will help the Bureau maintain a stable workforce that is especially critical in this housing crisis for positioning the Bureau to increase in demand for services. With us today are BDS Deputy Director Elshad and BDS Budget and Finance Manager Kyle to provide additional background information about the proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for excellent introduction. Elshad Hajiav, BDS Deputy Director. BDS, as Commissioner Rubio mentioned, is 98% funded through fees from our permit fees and for the charges of services. And we are required to maintain cost recovery, 100% cost recovery. So our revenues need to fully cover all of our expenditures. And then in the recent year, we have pressures on both sides, on the expenditure side and on the revenue side. As Commissioner Rubio mentioned, as far as our expenditure goes, more than 70% of our expenditures are labor costs. It's a personnel cost. And we are all aware of the COLAs, of the increases that are associated with labor agreements, and then merit pay increases, and then purse contributions, they rise every year, and also there is additional inflation in non-labor-related material costs. We also, what we're witnessing right now, it's also on the other side, on the revenue side, we see a decrease in revenues. A large portion of our, predominant majority of our revenues are based on the valuation of the projects. Large, expensive commercial projects, they bring a lot more revenue than the projects that are smaller, like, for example, a new house or a residential remodel. And we're very, in a very interesting And we are in a very interesting time where the mix of projects has changed. And we're seeing a lot fewer larger commercial projects and a lot more smaller projects that are coming in. So the workload still remains high because we get those smaller projects. However, there is a pressure on our revenues. A development of large projects like offices, hotels, apartments, is expected to be low for at least a couple of years. And the construction industry overall, and you've heard that in our budget presentations and also on May 12th work session, that they're dealing with the high interest rates, also high costs for labor and materials. They also are dealing with a lot of uncertainty. And then there is another factor that kind of plays into, that that pressure on the revenue side is the lending market does not really see Portland as risky compared to other cities on the West Coast, other cities across the country of the similar size and even riskier than Hillsborough or Beaverton or Vancouver on the other side of the river. So it's difficult for developers to get financing right now, especially for those larger projects that bring a lot of revenue. Currently, a lot of our fees are, they're below the 100% cost recovery. So this is the process that we go every year to make sure that our fees are adjusted so we can cope with the ongoing cost of inflation and continue providing services. And even if those changes, we still are not, with those proposed changes, we still are not at the 100% cost recovery. However, we're very cognizant of the impact on the construction industry. So we want to make sure that those fee changes are gradual. It's not like a big increase on our fees. When we have enough sufficient funding and staffing to meet those workload demands, we're better able to provide timely and efficient services. And also like Commissioner Rubio mentioned, also expand our online presence and provide new and enhanced services to our customers. And you all know that when we have new buildings coming on, that there is a multiplier effect. You have a one building coming on, suddenly you have shops around it, you have food carts, you have small businesses coming in. So there is this multiplier effect that is associated with new buildings, housing, shops, restaurants, schools. So it's grocery stores, social events. These fee increases are assumed in our five-year financial plan and also part of our budget submission. And as I mentioned, we are keeping those fee increases as gradual and as low as possible so that it's not creating a disincentive to our customers seeking service. And our goal is that work is permitted. So we do offer low-income fee waivers as needed, particularly when we're working to bring a property into compliance with life and safety regulations. So to summarize, the goals of this ordinance, of this fee change is to provide fund needed to maintain staffing capacity, to support BDS services, including technology support, and then keep up with the rising costs. And again, we talked about specifically labor costs. Overall, the summary is that we're proposing 5% increase across most of our programs. Some of our fees might be a little bit, the increase might be a little bit higher. Some of the fees are not being increased at all. So, and these fee changes affect building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, site development, science, enforcement, land use services, hearings officer, noise, and cannabis licensing fee schedules. We did, we do a very broad outreach with informing our customers about these fee changes. One of the venues that we use very intensively is Development Review Advisory Committee. We also reached out to BOMA, NAOP, HBA, so they are aware of those fee increases. And I wouldn't, I would not go as far as that they fully support it, but they understand why we are raising our fees. And all of our managers, they reached out to those key industry groups to inform them. The notification has been posted on our website. That actually concludes our presentation, and we're open to questions.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
I think I heard you correctly, but I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So this fee increase is fairly narrowly paid by developers who want to get their permitting through BDS. Is that a fair way of presenting this?
This fee increase is just to maintain the kind of a status quo right now. We're not.
But it's, the purpose here is to support the permitting process, correct?
Correct, absolutely.
And so in a sense, it is a pay-as-you-go for people who are seeking permits in the city of Portland. And it sounds like, you know, I've heard from many of them personally, and what I hear from them is they want the process to be efficient, they want it sped up. So it sounds like this is sort of a quid pro quo. The industry will pay slightly more, but in exchange, they expect better, faster service. Is that a fair way of characterizing this?
It is. With one caveat, if it's not approved, because again, 98% of our funding is coming from fees, most likely it will result in a reduction on our workforce.
Yeah, I understand. I'm saying in the affirmative, that's how this is to be used.
Correct.
Okay, and I'm saying this, colleagues, to underscore what's perhaps an obvious point. This is different than what we've been discussing in terms of broad-based taxes and fee and rate increases. This is a fairly specific group of people, group of organizations paying it for very specific services delivered to those same set organizations. And I have heard from them that this is something they want because they're expecting you to use those revenues to improve the service that they say needs to be improved. So I just wanted to underscore that.
That's an excellent description, Mayor, thank you.
Sometimes, you know what, I succeed. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Maps, go for it.
What's the field issuance remodel program?
That's a program that is focused on residential remodel, where we provide more expansive services to our customers. There is Inspector, one inspector assigned to a group of residential remodelers. So it's a very kind of a niche program. There is a fee associated with that to be in that program. We charge hourly fee on those, so that the usual building permit fee schedule doesn't apply. So it's a fee-based program. There is a kind of a concierge service. So for example, if I'm a residential contractor, I can call that inspector with any questions that I have about my project, and they pay extra. So there is a fee associated with that. This is a program, along with the FPP, which is a similar program, but on the commercial side, are very popular programs. We have actually a waiting list to get to each program, but we don't have resources to fully accept everybody into those two programs. But very popular, very well-regarded, both programs are well-regarded across both commercial and residential contractors.
Thank you, that's a helpful clarification. So I asked because I'm looking at your fee schedule for different programs, building mechanical, cannabis licensing, electrical. All of these have 5% fee increases except for the field issuance remodel program, which has a 9%. Why did you make that choice?
We did an analysis of the program as far as, again, that program also needs to cover the costs. So, and what we realized that the long-term, they're not covering their costs to the 100% cost recovery. So that's why we are kind of gradually increasing that hourly fee to bring them to that 100% cost recovery. So they're a little bit worse off, I would say, than the rest of the programs in the Bureau. That's why the increase is slightly higher.
Okay. And you said these fees don't achieve cost recovery for the most part? And how do you make this pencil out? So if you are not, if you are spending more than you're bringing in, why aren't you bankrupt?
We have a very healthy reserve. So, and we built that reserve during the construction boom. So when the world, we've seen all those cranes around the city. So we had an influx of the large commercial projects. And these are the times when we built that reserve. And a lot of you are familiar with the history of the Bureau in 2008 crisis, when we had to lay off more than half of our workforce. So since then, we developed measures in place that advise us. Like we have a business continuity plan that this council actually did look into, I think it was 2009 or 2010, and it was adopted by the council. So there are measures that we're looking, we're monitoring on a monthly basis to kind of, to advise us as far as if the winds are changing, basically. So we do forecasting, we look at all of our programs. Some of them separately, some of them we combine in our forecasting models. And then we do five-year forecasts. So our funding is really kind of, there's the revenue and there's this rainy day fund. And right now, we're using that rainy day fund because it takes so much time and money and resources to train employees to be productive. On average, I would say that for our plans examiner, employees who review plans or inspectors, it takes six to nine months from the date of hire to bring them up to speed, right? So we have a very talented workforce. And in times like this, we are going to use those reserves to make sure that we preserve that workforce. That's why, you know, I haven't touched a lot on the permit improvement task force and improvements in technology. So in these times, we kind of, we also refocus. We look at the ways how we can improve our services. So that reserve allows us to do that. And right now, we have approximately $47 million there. We are projected to draw approximately, if I'm not mistaken, 13?
Almost 14 million.
Almost $14 million next year, even with those fee changes. Because again, we're expecting that the construction will not be at the levels that will be, where we will be able to achieve that 100% cost recovery. But again, letting go of a talented workforce, it has implications that are, they span, 2008 was what, 15 years ago? We're still feeling that. So we cannot allow that force to go, we have to support them. We have to make sure that they are still employed, that there is a workload for them, and we can, you know, maintain them and kind of write that down.
Great, thank you very much. Two more questions, one just a clarification. So I understand you guys don't do cost recovery on fees here, but you do have a reserve and you're drawing on the reserve. Maybe you got 47 million in reserve and you've, like, I think I heard that you said next year or this year, you're going to draw on about 15 million?
We're projecting to draw down almost $14 million next year. That's if we get the fee changes approved by council. And the year after that, it would be around 11 or so, 11, 12 million, if the fee changes are approved by council. These fee changes represent about $3 million in revenue.
Sure. And what happens year three? I'm doing the math in my head to figure out how much runway you guys have left.
We, if we don't get the fee changes approved by council, we wouldn't be able to achieve cost recovery in the later years of our forecast. So we'd be looking at drawing down our reserves completely by fiscal year '26, '27.
And just one caveat, when we do financial projections, we assume that the current conditions will persist, right? So for example, we have a lot of risks on the horizon, and also there are a lot of unknowns that may unveil themselves in the year two of the forecast. So there might be, I'm just going to go positive and say that suddenly Portland recovers the reputation and there is a lot of tourists coming in and everything is revived. So our forecast will change. If that is going to come true, then our forecast is going to change next year and we're going to recalibrate the next five years. So we do that every year. And we refresh our models every, at least twice a year. We refresh them at the end of the fiscal year and in the middle of the next fiscal year. So yeah, we do a lot of work, again, because the funding, the way the Bureau is funded, we operate like business, basically. We have to make sure that we have enough money coming in, we have enough money in the bank to make sure that we continue to provide our services to the community.
Thank you. It's very helpful and very interesting to me. P-Bot and BDS are different beasts, but there are many similar dynamics in many ways. Just as a warning to the commissioner in charge of my colleagues, in many ways, you folks seem to be about, or potentially are about three years behind P-Bot, where P-Bot survived the pandemic by drawing on our reserves. Will blow through our reserves by the end of this year, and then it's a difficult space. One last, speaking of difficult spaces, one last question. You, in your presentation, you indicated that I suspect the financial markets or banks view Portland as being risky?
Riskier.
Riskier, what does that mean? And why would Portland be riskier than like Hillsborough, I think you cited, maybe, or Beaverton? I forget what the other cases that you talked about.
Sure. It's not just banks, it's developers as well. They're looking at institutional investors are not just regional, but nationwide. And they have to choose where they put their pot of money. And I think in, they could put some in Portland, but they could also go up to Seattle or Spokane or down to Sacramento. They can go really anywhere with it. And Portland hasn't had the best press in the last few years. And there have been, you know, some rankings in terms of the perception of Portland as a place to develop over the past few years. And a few years ago, we were at the top of the list, we were number three. And what we heard in our advisory committee from some folks that are in the know that we've dropped significantly. And out of 80 cities, we're now in the bottom quartile in 66 or so. So the perception from the outside, at least, of Portland has dropped significantly in the past several years, impacting where developers choose to put their money and the bank's choice to lend to them.
Oh, go ahead.
That pot of money unfortunately is also shrinking because of the higher interest rates. So they're more kind of selective as far as where they want to put that money. So, and then that's why, you know, Portland is kind of not at the top of the list. And I think it was yesterday or the day before, there was another ranking that came out. Kind of, they ranked them as a cold or hot economies, and we were, I think, fifth from the bottom, the cold. So, and I don't know how scientific those studies or rankings are, but we are kind of seeing the impact of those studies on the type and the number of permits that are coming in.
Thank you for that frankly grim assessment of how Portland is viewed. I'll just pivot to my colleagues and say, I hope that at some point over the summer, maybe we can have a work session or create some space to explore and identity to explore and get a better understanding of the factors that make Portland a risky place. Or we should have a discussion about why developers and bankers and other folks perceive us to be particularly risky. And I hope that we can use that discussion to implement policy changes that make Portland a more attractive place to start a business and grow a business and whatnot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Rubio. I have no further questions, I'll hand the floor back to you.
Great, Commissioner Gonzalez.
I just want, and this may be as much a question for my colleagues, but just thinking through the caps we put on, or what we did with SDCs last week, and looking at these fee increases, I guess the question is really an architecture one as we're looking at adjustments in prices in an era of real inflation that is driving our costs, obviously, and driving the cost of, the cost of our residents and developers who want to build in the city. The, and I'm just trying to, it's sort of an open-ended question, but reconcile. We're capping SDCs, which is essentially what we did last week, but pushing somewhat modest, but still real rate increases here. In your own minds, how do you reconcile those two actions?
Absolutely. I think there is a big difference between. I think there is a big difference between SDCs and the fees that we're presenting today. The fees that we're presenting today are for the services that we're providing right now. So when someone walks in into the DSC or schedules an online appointment and they apply for a permit, those services are provided immediately, right? We review the permit, we review the plans, then later on, depending on the project, maybe up to six months, we do the inspection. So, and we incur those costs almost immediately. SDCs, the costs are not, most of them, and I, I'm speaking from my understanding of SDCs, but the, but the costs are not incurred immediately, the costs are kind of in the future, right? So there is no immediate today impact on the staffing levels or on the financial situation of the Bureau. With our fees, there is, the impact is immediate. Like Kyle was saying, if these fees are, fee changes are not approved, it means that we will have $3 million less. $3 million is approximately 15 to 20 positions. So that's, that could have an impact on the provision of immediate services to our community. So that, that's kind of, to me, is a conceptual difference between the freeze on SDCs versus moving forward with the fee changes on, for BDS fees.
But just to follow that logic, if we're capping SDCs, we're not staying up with inflation, at some point in, you know, at some point in the future, we are going to have a come-to-Jesus moment, for lack of a better term, right? If we're not, if our revenue isn't consistent or isn't staying up with, with inflation, eventually, presumably that does lead to position cuts.
My, I agree. My personal opinion, we just kind of moved it to the future. We, you know, if, if, if the fee changes for SDCs were warranted because of the inflation and the freeze happened from kind of a more financial point of view, we basically moved that issue into, from the present to the future. So you're right, it just doesn't disappear, right? And I don't believe that we will experience any, at least at this point, any years of deflation, right? So far, it looks like at least the latest was like 3% or 4% that we're expecting in the future years.
Got it. And one last question, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but when we did, when we talk about SDCs, the whole pie, what percentage of SDCs go to BDS in a typical development?
BDS doesn't collect any SDCs, so that's why I prefaced my, my answers to your questions, that I'm not, I'm not fully worse than SDC, so that's my personal understanding, but we do not collect any SDCs. All of our fees are fees for service that is provided at a time of the application or at the time of the inspection or at the time of the plan review. So the impact on a customer is immediate, basically. If we, if we scale down our services, then our timelines will be longer, we won't be, do as many inspections per day as we're doing right now, for example. So the impact will be immediate. With SDCs, like you said, we just moved it to the future. There will be impact.
Got it. And I guess this is, again, just an observation, we took steps last week to assure that we're removing barriers, that we're not standing in the way of development at a very difficult time in the city's history. We, in some senses, externalize that to other bureaus to bear the burden of that in some respects, at least in the future. And I just want to make sure when we're approaching fees, that we're doing it with an architecture that makes sense and that we're doing it in somewhat a consistent way. But I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Elshad, Kyle, it's good to see you. I kind of know this topic very well because we were in the, some really scary times in 2020 and 21 on this, and you really helped educate me on the crisis that we had to avoid, that we experienced. We have lived experience that what happened after the Great Recession really dismantled BDS, and we just can't ever get back to that place. So thank you for making that point very clearly. There's a new tax, if you will, or fee, and that's cannabis. And I promised a dear friend who owns one of those retail outlets to just ask a couple of questions. I was told we have really high fees in comparison to other states and other cities, and so I just wanted to put that out. I think our statewide rate is 17%, and then it keeps going up 5% every year. They're having a really hard time, a lot of it is like, a lot of our small businesses, they've been spending a lot of money on security. And so I did get lobbied, if you will, to please acknowledge that the cannabis fee in general is really challenging for some of our retail outlets right now. So I want to make sure in the first reading, I put that into the public record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Is there any public testimony on this item?
Yes, we have two individuals signed up.
Three minutes each, name for the record.
First is Andrew Morrow.
Welcome.
They were planning to join virtually, I don't think they've joined us. Next is Wade Lange.
There he is. Thanks for your patience.
It was a pleasure watching back there.
What a morning.
Yeah, a lot of interesting things, for sure.
Made me proud to be in Portland there.
Good to hear you say, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Wade Lange, and I'm here in my role as interim executive director of the Building Owners and Managers Association of Oregon, or BOMA. BOMA represents over 50 million square feet of office, medical, industrial space within the state, primarily within the metro area. We are part of the commercial real estate industry that testified in 2020 about our concerns over BDS budget cuts and staff reductions. We appear here today for those same reasons. There's been a dramatic reduction in development and construction projects over the last three years. Because BDS budget is based on fees for such development and construction, and BDS continues to draw from its reserves, we are once again fearful of more staff reductions throughout the Bureau. Reduced staffing directly affects the timing, cost of commercial construction projects. Delays in development or construction can kill projects at a time when our city desperately needs to see new and continued investment. The impact of delayed or canceled projects has a ripple effect throughout the region, affecting not just individual projects or commercial buildings, but also the vendors contracted to work in those buildings, the businesses who utilize them, and the construction industry in general. We believe there is a potential turnaround coming for Portland, bringing new projects that will have positive economic impacts for the entire metro region, but only if projects are assured of reasonable path of implementation. There's more than just affordable housing needed for Portland to recover, and we need BDS to be available and able to serve us all. Therefore, BOMA is in support of those fee increases necessary to reduce or stop the draw on the reserves and the reduction in BDS employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your testimony. And Christina, was there somebody else, or they didn't show up?
They didn't show in Zoom. That completes testimony.
All right, good. Anything else on this particular item? This is a non-emergency item. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance, it moves to second reading. Next item, please, 419.
Authorize intergovernmental agreement with regional disaster preparedness organization to allow building-related stranded workers to work in the jurisdiction where they are stranded due to an emergency that disrupts communications and transportation routes.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, today I'm requesting that council adopt this ordinance to enable BDS sign a building-related stranded worker agreement, or SWAG. The purpose of this stranded worker intergovernmental agreement is to authorize and establish conditions for sharing building-related stranded workers within the five-county regional disaster preparedness organization region during a building safety emergency. SWAGs allow stranded workers to contribute their skills to whatever jurisdiction they find themselves in, in an, during an emergency, if they can't report to their normal work situation. This type of agreement is only triggered under limited and specific circumstances, when skilled workers are unable to report to their normal work location, jurisdiction, or jurisdiction during an emergency, and when their receiving agency lacks bandwidth and capacity and welcomes the assistance. Mark Fetters, BDS supervisor, Matt Rosell, the city's building official, and Dr. Anne Castleton, the emergency manager and project lead from BDS, will present this ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. My name is Mark Fetters, and I am the supervisor for BDS's safety, emergency management and facilities programs, and we're happy to bring this ordinance to you this afternoon. Just for a bit of context, back in 2014, the city council authorized a similar stranded worker agreement with the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization, or RDPO, for the sharing of emergency operations center workers, and that's in your packet labeled Exhibit B, that ordinance. This ordinance that we're bringing to you today covers other types of workers that are also important in, in an emergency or disaster situation. Many of the government agencies that are located in the region that the RDPO covers, the five-county region, employ building officials, inspectors, plans examiners, engineers and architects who have professional certifications and qualify as building safety evaluators. These are the folks who, in a disaster, can do rapid damage assessment of structures, which is a critical function in responding to, be it an earthquake or other nature disaster. Those agencies also employ other types of staff who are related to building permitting processes, so folks who are involved in permitting, permitting software, facility maintenance. And those folks are also important in responding to a significant disaster. We know that the Pacific Northwest is prone to a variety of natural disasters, from earthquakes to floods to wildfires, snow and ice storms. We've experienced all that. And when those hazards occur, it can have significant impacts on transportation routes, it can cut off power and communications, and the result of that is that you have workers who are qualified to, whether it's doing damage assessments or supporting building-related functions in an emergency, those workers end up being stranded in the locations where they are and unable to report to their normal work locations. So you might have a building inspector from Washington County who lives in southeast Portland, they might not be able to get to Washington County to do damage assessment, but possibly they could report in Portland where they are and do damage assessment here rather than just being idled. And that's what this ordinance is attempting to address. And I'll turn it over to Matt Rosell to give you more information.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing us to be here. For the record, my name's Matt Rosell. BDS is responsible for assessing the safety of the city's buildings. We have more than 206,000 buildings in the city. After an earthquake such as the Cascadia Subduction Zone, we would need to go out and evaluate all of those buildings. BDS has about 150 qualified staff who can go out and evaluate buildings and determine whether they can be re-entered or re-occupied. Estimating, you know, 35 to 45 minutes per building for the initial safety evaluation, and assuming we have 150 staff available to do those assessments, and also that there are no aftershocks that would require us to start over, our best-case scenario is that it would take about 20 weeks to evaluate all the buildings in the city of Portland. So I will hand that, hand it over to Anne.
Hello, hello all. I realize that we're standing between you and lunch. And I, my name for the record is Anne Castleton. I just wanted to say of those, that 20 weeks that Matt just mentioned, you can imagine what the impact is on business if they have to wait 20 weeks to get back into their buildings, to have access to their buildings. And one of the biggest challenges for us after the earthquake is going to be the economic recovery of the city and trying to get people to stay here. In a situation like this, oftentimes people leave and don't ever return. So the bad news is that when we looked, we used the Everbridge system to look at where all of our 150 inspectors live, I would say 40 to 50% live out of town. They're outside Portland boundaries, so that's an even bigger limitation. But we also know that there's an, I don't know how many, but other folks live in our city boundaries and would be able to help us. So I'm sure you're aware that the expectation is that transportation routes and bridges are going to be disrupted, that communication might be disrupted, and so people are not going to be able to report to their ordinary duty station. So this stranded worker agreement is really just trying to address that situation, which is really only would happen probably after an earthquake, and it would only really be relevant for those first few weeks before the bridges are repaired and that people are getting around. So with this agreement in place, these folks that live in our city limits could participate and support us in our building evaluations. So by signing this agreement, it would allow us to both to provide our staff to others where they live and to accept staff that are credentialed to help us get through this process quickly. So that's all that we have, Commissioner Rubio.
Great, thank you, Mark, Matt, and Anne, for your presentation.
Yeah, thanks, this is a great idea. Do we have public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Any further discussion?
I just have one.
Commissioner Gonzalez, you bet.
Just one request. I just want to make sure that there's coordination with Director Ahmed at PBAM on this. I think there was a little bit of a question mark when this came through, whether PBAM had been able to weigh in on it. So that's just a request between today and second reading, if there could be a touch base there. I don't see anything controversial here, just want to make sure we're coordinated internally.
This is, could I just say that this is from the RDPO, and Ahmed, Director Ahmed is the boss, the host of RDPO. So I would assume that the RDPO and Ahmed have had a discussion about this.
Yeah, I think there was, it, it may not be that that's occurred, so I just want to make sure that we're, when this came through, there was just a little bit of a question mark on it. So if someone could reach out to him, that would be great, between next, now and then.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Maps.
Sure, this looks like a good idea to me, and I think my brain probably went in some of the same spaces that Commissioner Gonzalez pointed to. I hadn't really thought about BDS's role in disaster recovery very deeply. Great to learn more about that and great to see that folks are planning for the inevitable. I do have some, I do wonder how, especially in this space, how, and I'm going to make this a statement as more than a question, so we can get on to the other things on our agenda. Be great to see coordination with PBAM around this, I don't know if those conversations already happened. And I do have one quick question, especially, does BDS have a relationship with FEMA? It certainly seems with some of this stuff that FEMA would be on the ground in the, in the event of an earthquake. I'm not sure who owns this space or what planning. Anne, is that, is that your hand up?
Yeah. So FEMA, this, this agreement really would be for a very concentrated period of time before FEMA gets here. FEMA thinks they won't get here for a couple of weeks. So, and FEMA doesn't ever take, they don't usurp responsibility from the authority having jurisdiction, which is BDS for, for buildings. So this agreement, the RDPO is five counties, so it's Multnomah, Clackamas, Washington, Clark, Columbia, it's all those five counties. So all of the counties are signing, are working on this agreement, and all of the municipalities within this agreement, within that region, so that we can all share folks. So FEMA would, and so they're all kind of working on this also, and are looking to see what Portland does. But FEMA probably doesn't come in at that point. FEMA comes in in a broader damage assessments, but not the building-related, that's really under Matt as our building official. It would be responsible for that. They will do overall damage assessments of like, is it enough that we declare a national emergency and start sending in the troops?
Anne, thank you so much for that clarification, I learned some stuff there. I have no more questions.
Very good. And Commissioner Gonzalez, did you have another question or set?
No.
All right, very good. And I already asked about public testimony, I think there was none?
There's none.
All right, very good. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance, it moves to second reading. Now to the items on the consent agenda that were pulled, item number 404, please.
Update resolution connecting mental health and substance abuse recovery services to unhoused individuals.
Colleagues, item 404 is an update to Resolution 37595 of the five resolution package that Commissioner Ryan and I introduced. that Commissioner Ryan and I introduced and that the city council passed back in November of 2022. That resolution created the temporary alternative shelter sites will connect unsheltered Portlanders with mental health and substance abuse recovery services, as well as access to housing placements. This update to that resolution allows for a maximum of 200 individuals at a temporary alternative shelter site. Governor Kotek entered executive order, all-in plan for the state, included funding for 140 pod units for the first site, as well as funding for six months of operating expenses. Of those 140 pods, 35 of them can accommodate pairs or couples. So there may be more than 150 people on site when fully occupied. For this reason, I'm moving to update the resolution to a maximum of 200 individuals to accommodate these pods from Governor Kotek. I want to thank Governor Kotek for funding these pods, as well as the operating expenses, and in believing that temporary alternative shelter sites are a necessary part of our larger continuum of care. Together, we will help get unsheltered Portlanders off the streets and connected to the services that they so desperately need. I don't know who pulled this and whether they have specific issues they want addressed.
It was pulled by Josie Kressner.
Is Josie here or online? Great. Come on, three minutes, please, for your public testimony. And if you could just introduce yourself for the record, please.
Thank you for the time to speak, Mayor Wheeler and Council. Thank you. It's a marathon of a session you guys run on Wednesdays. So thank you again for the time. Hi, my name is Josie Kressner. I have a PhD in transportation engineering. I'm a local business owner, working in data science and city planning. And I'm a homeowner with a 10-month-old immediately outside the 100,000-foot perimeter, the Clinton Triangle, Gideon site. I'm also on the board of the Hosford Abernathy Neighborhood Association and also participating in the working group with the city on the Good Neighbor Agreement. The following comments, I want to emphasize, are my own and have not been discussed by the Neighborhood Association Board. But in my opinion, both the Hosford Abernathy and Brooklyn Neighborhoods, along with Central Eastside, have been working in good faith with the city to set the shelter site up for everyone involved to be successful. And we're doing our best to curtail, obviously, any nimbism, even with this extreme situation. However, this resolution here, among other acts by the city and county, indicates to me that the city is playing a little bit fast and loose with the solution. And I say that because this first site resides, according to census data, in a block group where approximately one in five are minors. Majority of those minors are zero to nine years old. This age group, in this small collection of city blocks, is 20% higher than the average rate in the city as a whole and 10% higher than the whole county. Just to be extra clear, this means that the immediate area around the camp has 20% more zero-to-nine-year-olds than the average neighborhood in the city. It's in this neighborhood with 20% more young children. They've chosen to build your proof of concept or experiment. The difference on paper between 150 or 200 or 250 seems trivial. But to the people living here, that number is huge. It's enormous. How does one living in a shelter of 250 people feel a sense of responsibility or ownership to the community inside the shelter as well as to the neighborhood outside? Please consider removing or keeping, sorry, please consider keeping the original number of persons in place until the city has proven that this model is safe enough for the, safe enough on the ground for the children who live here in Portland. Where, where, I have 30 seconds. That's fine. Where Measure 110 has made things different than, for example, LA, San Francisco and Austin. I do not request, I do not make this request as a gatekeeper of the neighborhood. And in fact, I'm not here to oppose the solution. I amend you, commend you for making change because we need to see change. But rather, as a person concerned about the ability of the city and county to scale up all the services required at the site for everyone involved in time.
Thank you. And first of all, thank you for your patience. You've been sitting here hour after hour. We're into our fifth hour of council, and you've been sitting here patiently throughout most of it. I want to acknowledge that and thank you for that. The good news is actually a pretty interesting council session. We covered a lot of ground. I want to acknowledge that what you're saying is accurate in terms of the concerns that you're expressing are very legitimate concerns. And they are the same concerns that I have had and my staff has had. I will also tell you, I believe we have adequately addressed those concerns. We will not go full bore until we feel confident that we have a model that works. And in fact, the service provider is now operating one of our smaller Safe Rest Villages in a different part of the city. And so we're also evaluating their progress there. Part of the core difference between this strategy and other strategies we've used is the intensity with which it will be managed. It's 1 to 15, one personnel per 15 individuals, as opposed to what's more typical, which is 1 to 40 or even 1 to 100. So there is more intensive oversight and management of what's going on in this facility. The difference here is really the pods. Some of the pods, as I indicated in my sort of brief introduction here, could, and I underscore, could accommodate couples. And so it may be that we still have 140, or it could be potentially more if they happen to be couples occupying those pods. So there's a little bit of flexibility here that we're trying to bring into the model. And because we agreed that there would be an original cap, that's why we're here today. And I don't know if, Sky, you have something more to add to that? Or if you want to retract anything I said that wasn't accurate?
I would just say thank you for participating with the Good Neighbor Agreement.
Thank you. Colleagues, I don't know if anybody else has a thought or a concern. So obviously, this first site is critically important to our success. If we botch the first site, if the neighbors are unhappy, or they don't feel that they're safe, or they don't feel we've lived up to our end of the bargain with regard to maintaining the perimeters, the rest of the sites won't work. So we know we're going to be watched very, very closely.
I think as, I know you guys are doing your best and it really, you know, the first site is both a positive and a negative. But I think where I'm, as a participant in the working group, not getting a good enough answer yet is immediately outside that 1,000-foot perimeter zone one. Where we go, there's a lot of ideas and services and phone numbers to call for different issues, but there's not a clear sight on where the solution is going to come when there's somebody shooting up a needle in front of, you know, XYZ place in that area. And we know that that, up to 250 people at a very close proximity are likely having substance abuse problems. It's going to be an issue. And Measure 110 is, as we all know, making it difficult. And it just seems like I know you can't commit to keeping that number down for other reasons. There's money that became available. We can't turn it away. But at the same time, it doesn't feel like there's enough being done about that immediate area. There's not enough resources. And I know you're fighting for it. There's, you know, Measure 411 is here. But I don't want to put the cart before the horse. We're not saying don't do it here. We're just saying like, hey, we, you know, Measure 110 passed before. There was a lot of things in place that needed to be in place.
Clearly.
Yeah, I know. And so I don't want, you know, we, I think I forgot. I didn't know if I even read this last sentence, but we don't want to be, our young children in the neighborhood and our families don't want to be the collateral damage on this one.
Yeah, and I agree. And just FYI, the neighborhood number will go directly to the service provider, and we will get regular updates and accountability on that. And I have personally pledged that if there's issues outside of the 1,000-foot perimeter, we will address those as well. Yeah, I mean, we, the problem is it's every square block of the city at the moment.
I recognize that everybody still.
Actually, the intensive efforts will be around the temporary alternative shelter sites. And that's what I've been telling people. You know, we're going to focus our resources in the vicinity of those temporary alternative shelter sites. And we acknowledge that there's trouble spots that have been identified by the neighborhood that are beyond that 1,000-foot perimeter. The schools, the safe routes to schools, there's some overpasses that are of concern to some residents in the neighborhood. And we've committed to addressing those sites as well. But anyway, I appreciate what you're saying. We have to do something, though. We have, we have to move forward to address this problem. And this is our best shot, from my perspective. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gonzalez?
I just want to say I appreciate your commentary. I actually appreciate your, I'm going to use the word pessimism, but I say that without judgment, that we've heard many promises from public players on behavioral health, including on Measure 110. We've seen a number of statements around the support of families and of young children in our community. And we've consistently seen behaviors that are inconsistent with those statements. So I would encourage you to continue to be fierce in advocating for children in the city of Portland. I would encourage you to continue to question every level of government in the state when it says we are family-friendly, that we are committed to protecting children's ability in the city. On this particular issue, right now, I have a level of deference to the mayor, but please hold us accountable. And I wish I could say we're always going to keep our promises as a city. I was on the outside before and witnessed some of those promises that weren't kept. And now I'm on the inside and trying to help make sure that we do keep our promises. I, so I don't know if that helps. I'm going to have a staff member talk to you about something else in your neighborhood that's somewhat related. We do have some good news on the public safety front that may be coming to your neighborhood soon. It does not directly responsive to the issue you're raising here. But I just want to say thank you for testifying. Parents absolutely have to speak up in this city and in this community. And you can trust, but you have to verify. And I've heard a lot of empty promises in my years, particularly the last five, in the city of Portland with respect to families and parents. And please keep speaking up.
I will make a further commitment. If it doesn't work, I'll stand down. This is that important to me, that we have, we have to address this crisis on our streets. We have to. The viability of the city is at stake. And this is my best shot. This is the best shot my team and I can give. And if this doesn't work, I'll turn it over to somebody else for a different strategy. But I'm 100% confident it will, that we have the right combination, that we're filling the right gaps, that we're meeting the needs of people that are currently unmet. Because you're right. I agree with you that it's not, and I've been saying this for years, often to my political detriment, that it's not just about the housing, that there are people who are struggling with behavioral health issues. There are people struggling with substance use disorder issues. There are people who are not getting access to basic health care, that despite myriads of outreach efforts, we're not reaching people. So we have to consolidate the services and bring people to where those services are. And I've also been equally fervent in my belief that we have to address the public health, the public safety and the livability issues caused to the whole community by unsanctioned homeless camps. And to me, this is the right strategy. And I'm that confident, and you don't have to take that to the bank.
I mean, I'm not disagreeing with your approach. I just want to make sure that, yeah.
And I, and I actually enjoy this, and I appreciate your background, by the way, because you mentioned that you're in data analysis, data management, and we live and die on that, right? Those are the results. But this is our best shot. And I'm six and a half years into this. Commissioner Gonzalez just said for five years he's heard promises broken. I hope he hasn't heard me break my promises. But I have a vision for the city that does not include the human carnage that we're seeing on our streets. My vision for the city is very, very different. And I'm dedicating my life to ensure that this works. That's how much I'm putting into this. But I'm hearing you as a parent. I'm hearing you as a neighbor. And I appreciate what you're saying. And I hope I can address those concerns, allay those concerns by showing you that this program works. That's my expectation. And my whole team is dedicated to that notion.
I believe you all. I just recognize that it's hard to move this many people and this many programs in, you know, programs that are separated and hard to communicate between.
I have climbed mountains that make this, like, Mount Everest was nothing compared to this. But, you know, we're collectively up to the challenge, right? I mean, we want to do this, and we want to do right by you, and we want to do right by the rest of the community. And so I feel a personal commitment to you, to be perfectly honest with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The resolution is adopted. And to our last item this morning before we go into our afternoon session, item 406 also pulled. And it's for a proposed amendment that we have to add.
Authorized Grant Agreement with Legacy Health for FY 2022 through '23 to renovate the Unity Health, Unity Center for Behavioral Health Psychiatric Emergency Service Base to expand capacity for crisis triage and add eight sobering bed/recliners, not to exceed $335,000.
Colleagues, I almost hate to waste your time with this, but we have been informed that there will be nine sobering bed recliners rather than eight, which was specified in the original ordinance. I move to amend the ordinance to update eight sobering bed recliners to nine. Can I please get a second? We have a second from Commissioner Ryan. Any further discussion on this important matter, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm just going to say if there's a mistake to be made, this is a great one. I'm glad to expand the, you know, I think that we could do a factor of 10 here and be in the ballpark of where we want to be. Worth the wait.
Very good. Is there anyone signed up for public testimony on this matter?
No one signed up.
Good. I was hoping nobody would lambast me for my addition area error. Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
I'm an eye on this, and I'm really glad to see these beds in place. This is a critically important, unmet need in our community. I think we have nine beds here. I think we're told that it would be good to have about another 40 more. And that's my goal, and I look forward to working with this council to get those additional beds online. I vote aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. Colleagues, given the lateness of the hour, I would propose we... What? Oh, you're right. Thank you. Sorry. That was the amendment. The amendment was adopted. To the main motion is amended. Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Yeah, we closed our last sobering station in 2018. Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership to move this forward. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Badly needed. We need many, many more bed space, bed spaces. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The amendment is adopted and the motion passes as amended. Colleagues, we've now been meeting for the better part of five hours. I would recommend we take at least 20 minutes for lunch and reconvene at 2:15 PM. That'll give us an opportunity to reset. It'll give staff the opportunity to take a breather before we go into what could be a long afternoon session. What? 2:30? Is that okay with everybody? Okay, we will reconvene at 2:30. We're adjourned.